To um, welcome everybody to Town of Wapins. Can we all rise for a pledge to the flag? Pledge allegiance.
The United States of America. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, I'd like to ask the secretary to perform roll call attendance, please.
Mr. Saru?
He's muted.
Can't unmute himself again.
Mr. Saru? Mr. Freno?
Here.
Mr. Marinaccio?
Here.
Mr. Moselli?
Here.
Mr. Perachicos? Mr. Perachicos? Mr. Flower?
He may also be having a problem getting unmuted.
Uh, Saru's here, uh, B. I did, they just unmuted me.
I think we're good, Bruce.
Okay, alright. Um, okay, all the board members have received the minutes, um, from the March 1st meeting from the secretary. Uh, if there's to be no discussion regarding the minutes, can we get a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Okay, who was, uh, Ralph made the second?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. Alright, um, our first item on the agenda this evening is the, uh, adjourned public hearing for a Smith three lot subdivision. Is the applicant's engineer on with us this evening? Okay, if the applicant's engineer is on, can he please raise his hand?
Bruce, he's muted.
He's muted?
Andrew, Andrew Bolson on page two.
He's on page two? Okay. Alright.
Yeah, Bruce.
Hi, how you doing? Okay, I just got you. Alright. So, um, I guess might as well, um, obviously you received the two letters from the, um, from both the town planner and the engineer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, is there any questions, I guess, regarding that? I mean, we probably should just discuss the, the items that were brought up at the last meeting. And, you know, how those items were addressed.
Sure. Would I be able to share my screen to show you guys our, our updated drawings?
Um, yes, we can do that. We could have, um, okay.
Can everybody see that?
Yep, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so, um, at the meeting, uh, February 1st, there was a couple of comments from neighboring properties regarding, uh, screening. Um, and it was decided that we should, um, show the limits of vegetation to remain on our plan, so, uh, you can see here the gray bubbled, or excuse me, the green bubbled area is, uh, denoting vegetation that's to remain on, uh, the site with, uh, the proposed work that we're doing. So, um, hopefully that addresses, uh, the neighboring properties' concerns, um, sufficiently. Uh, another thing that was brought up was, um, well, um, issues with water supply. We had an initial call with the, uh, health department, but I think a follow-up submission is gonna have to be made to them to have a discussion with them regarding that, uh, because, um, an extension of the, the water district would be required in order to connect us to that. Um, and that's, uh, gonna be tough for the owner to do, so, um, we're gonna have to make a decision, uh, a submission to the health department and have a conversation with the, uh, approving engineer uh, over there to, to see if we can find a way to, uh, get the wells to, to work out there, so, um, we know that that's an, an issue that, uh, neighboring properties have, and it's something that we're gonna be addressing soon, uh, in our submission to the health department. Another thing was stormwater. The engineer had wanted to, uh, see some stormwater management. We proposed, uh, soil amendment and some landscape areas, but we had a conversation with Pete and, uh, worked out that infiltration trench is gonna be more, uh, useful to both town and to the, uh, the applicant, so we're gonna go ahead and revise our plans to show that instead of what we have shown here, so, uh, we should be able to mitigate concerns relative to stormwater runoff, both to, uh, properties behind us and, uh, to the north of us as well, so, I think those are the three main comments that, that came out of the last meeting. Um, and then, uh, other comments from the, uh, the town engineer and the town planner were addressed and, uh, their, their follow-up, uh, follow-up letters were received and reviewed and will address those remaining outstanding issues that they had in those, in our follow-up submission, so.
Okay, um, just to ask, I might as well ask the engineer, uh, Pete, uh?
Uh, yeah, um, as I had said that, uh, yeah, we did have a conversation with them in regards to, uh, taking other roof leaders and putting them into, uh, infiltration, uh, chambers versus, uh, the replacing of the soil that's shown on the plan and, uh, so that's gonna be done and, uh, cause I believe that the major concern was, um, that, uh, the site flows from south to, uh, north and, uh, um, it does pond just on the neighbor's property, uh, alongside the road, so, I think by taking, uh, the roof leaders out of the, uh, equation and putting them into an infiltration trench, that that should, um, uh, take care of any issues, plus, plus leaving, uh, a good portion of the remaining, um, vegetation too. Um, you know, that'll help. And then I guess the only other thing was we had, we had found that actually, um, that the, um, that the parcel is within the United Wapins, um, sewer district so that there's no additional sewer buy-in fees. Um, but I did have one question for, um, Andrew. Andrew, what was, what was the concern from the health department in regards to being able to install wells here?
Uh, so there, we talked with Dan Keeler over there who's been the, uh?
Right.
The engineer for the town for quite a while. Uh, his, his issue was that, you know, he's, he said that they've had some supply issues for quite a while now, all over the town. And he, he, his, his point was if they're, if they're so close to the water district, then he doesn't see why, um, an extension of the water district wouldn't be the proper course of action here. Um, I don't, I don't know if he has, you know, up-to-date information regarding, uh, where exactly the mains are or, uh, you know, what, what he knows and doesn't know, but, you know, extending the water main would, would cost the applicant quite a lot of money, so, um, that's something that we were really looking to avoid, so, uh, he, he did say in our phone call that he was willing to have a, kind of a phone conference with us and Lee Felsham to discuss this, so, we just haven't had the opportunity to have that, that conversation with them yet, so.
Okay. So, uh, well, uh, along those lines, so there's obviously a well for the, uh, existing house. Have you talked to them, had you talked to them about doing a, a pump test on that well? I don't know, you know, how deep it is, but maybe there's some testing that could be done on that well that would, that would give you like an indication of, you know, the supply.
Okay, yeah, no, I hadn't brought that up to him. I just, I wanted to, to broach the, the subject with him, but we haven't, we haven't talked about it.
I mean, I agree for, you know, two lots, it would be expensive to, you know, extend a, a water main. Depend, I don't know exactly where it is, but I'd have to go look, but.
Yeah, it's actually.
But.
Uh, I was just gonna say, it's actually marked out right now. I think they're doing some work out there. It, it actually, it's on the corner of, um, Old Hope Well and that, that other road that's, um, adjacent or across Old Hope Well from Losi. It kind of elbows there and then, um, heads down to the south and across to the east. If you, if you can see based on this, so, yeah.
Alright, well, that's something that you'll look at.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, um, alright, um, Malcolm, do you have any, uh, anything that needs to be touched on here?
My only question, uh, it's right in the middle of this map. Raise grade to achieve proposed spot elevations.
Yeah.
The reference down below, uh, the, the pointer to the north makes sense. We knew about that, and it's within the area of disturbance. The pointer below goes to what I was under the impression was vegetation proposed to remain. Is that the existing grade there that you're hoping to achieve?
Yeah, I think that's just the leftover spot elevation, Malcolm. I think I was, I was going through and doing, um, I was trying to get slopes. Just figure out how that the water was gonna drain across the slope, so I think I had just left that over. That's a 248 spot elevation and it's a 248 contour, so.
Okay.
Could be the same elevation.
Perfect. Yeah, I figured it was probably a typo. Other than that, no, all of our, all of our outstanding issues have been addressed.
Okay, um, alright, uh, I guess at this point we can, I guess we can open the floor, uh, to anybody that wishes to speak on behalf of this application. Um, we need to, if you wish to speak, you're gonna need to raise your hand so that we know you would like to, um, ask a question at this point.
We have someone.
What was that? That's fine, yeah, I have a little trouble with, uh, seeing who's got their hand up. Yeah, so Julie King, if, uh, if you wish to go ahead and speak. Okay, Julie, you there? That, you're unmuted at this point. Okay, I guess, I don't know what's going on with her. She had sent me a message saying she couldn't, she couldn't hear us. Um, so she can't hear the meeting. Okay, um, maybe we'll go to this next person here that, uh, the, uh, the Galaxy Note 8. You have to un, you need to unmute, okay? Yes, hi, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Our name is Diana and Carlos Olivares. And we are actually at 12 Hamilton Road, down the road.
Okay.
Um, so we have, we have a few concerns. Uh, one of them strongly is the water issue. Um, when we first moved here a couple of years ago, uh, our water was nice, strong flow. There was not a lot of sulfur. There was not a lot of iron. We had a great test. Um, when initially you had some building up the road from us in Marlville, after they started, you know, digging and, and drilling there, our water tablet went down substantially. We have high iron in our water now, sulfur. Um, and there's just time to set the, the water pressure and the amount of soot that's in our water currently is real, is pretty bad. Um, so I'm really concerned that anything else that's gonna go on, you know, to pull and any more water from these areas is really gonna affect the underlying streams that are all interconnected. And we, you know, we just moved here for a few reasons. Um, you know, to have private water and not city water. And we could maintain our own water and, you know, filter it as what we need. Uh, so that's a concern for us. Uh, number two is the fact that when we're coming home from work for, for a few years now, coming off of 9D on, um, Old Hope Well there and where the nesting house is, there's times I have to go all the way around, as well as my husband, because the traffic is so bad that you could sit there for like 15 minutes just waiting and it starts all the way, you know, sometimes before you even get Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay, can we, I, um, I have to limit you to the, I should have said this earlier before we, we opened a public hearing, but the comments tonight are only being taken upon the, the three lot subdivision, the Smith subdivision, which is on Loson Road and, um, Old Hope Well Road. Uh, there will be a public hearing in the future for the Gaslamp Project, which is, um, the area that you're currently talking about now, um, traffic and things like that. We wanna hold that off to another meeting.
Okay, cause I was, I was told the meeting was today.
Yes, yes.
I apologize.
Okay, yeah, we're just talking about the subdivision right now. Um, there will be some discussion regarding the, the other project, but it's not open to public discussion tonight. Um, tonight it's just for the board to have conversation with the applicant. Um, to discuss, um, you know, proposals that they have for their project. Um, and to give them information, you know, to give them some direction to move forward. Uh, so tonight and currently right now, I'm trying to hold everything for anybody that's, uh, um, in the area of the Smith three lot subdivision.
Okay.
Okay, um, but we, we will, we will listen, we will hear your comments at a future date, and I believe that you, you'll probably know when that will be.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good night. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Um, again, uh, let's, let's back up to, um, anybody that's out there. I see, uh, Julie King, uh, I see your hand is still up. Can you hear us? Alright, I guess we're still. She's still having.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time raising my hand on the, on that, but, um, the one that says, uh, Darlene or iPhone would like to speak next, I'm just helping her out.
Okay, um, alright, uh, Darlene, um, you have some comments regarding the Smith three lot subdivision.
Yes, I do. There was a.
Well, if you could, please, um, give us your, your, your full name and your address, please.
Darlene Appel, own, owner for Susich Place, Wapins, New York, exactly behind the subdivision.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead with your questions.
My question is, is that previously, last year, a tree fell on my fence, which was older and now just replaced at my expense. And now there's more trees that fell back there from the house exactly next door, which I have not even heard from. My insurance company has to handle. Allstate has to handle the tree damage, which is significant, exactly, again, behind the fence. And it seems like whatever goes on with the property behind me and next door always then falls onto my expense. And my great concerns were, again, the water and the wells and the diminished usage that I will definitely have from building on that property. This house, my house, has a B-Dry system for water runoff, which I have some pumps downstairs that evacuate that water into the storm drain on Susich at the end of my driveway. And, and I just, I, I, I'm sorry, but I, I, I don't know how else to say this, is that I, I, I think that whatever then goes on back there, again, somehow it's gonna fall back onto my house, my value on my property, my expense. And, and, and I, I am not gonna agree on, on this project. I'm not going to. I have great concerns for the value and preservation of my home at Four Susich Place. I have an in-ground pool back there. I can't have interference with the water tables back there because of the compression on the sides, the body of the submerged part of the pool. There's already an underground stream from what that I understand that presses against the side, diving board side, which it abuts to Old Hope Well Road. There's already underground water there where that presses against my liner on my pool and I, I just have great concerns that this is gonna cause significant property damage to my home, of which that, uh, it seems like no matter what happens around here, I, I'm held responsible to take care of my, the expenses regarding the preservation of my property.
Okay, well, I mean, we're having, I mean, their engineer has been addressing those issues. Obviously, the water issue, you know, needs to be addressed though, so. Um, we'll, we'll have them look into it. Thank you.
The trees that are back there that are gonna be removed, the trees are falling because of the fact that we have had so much rain. The trees suck up the water. That was the point and purpose. To leave that property as it is. I mean, I, I know that the house wants to build these houses for their children to live in the yard. My daughter is, is a an officer and she has to live 20 minutes below the Canadian border. I would love if my daughter could live in the backyard, but this property is not zoned for that purpose. And I have great concerns for my property, the preservation and value of my property and the expense that may in- incur to me as a result of disturbing that property.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll have your comments addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else, um, that wishes to speak on this application? I see David with your hand up. Uh, if you unmute yourself or actually Tom, you may need to help. Uh, thank you.
Hi. Can you hear me?
David, yes, if you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm David Baskin. Uh, my mom lives at 13 Losi Road, which is, uh, property to the north uh, on this drawing here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I have a question for the engineer. Look, he said he updated the map to highlight which vegetation would be remaining. Um, could he, I guess, show me or maybe zoom in so I could see that a little bit and just, I guess, highlight how much? Uh, yeah, it's hard for me to know the scale of this, so how, how much is actually being kept here?
If, um, Andrew, if you wanted to just answer the question real quick. If, I'm not sure if you're, might be muted.
Thank you. Um, hey, David, thank you for the question. Um, we were hoping to keep at least, uh, a line of trees between the properties. I know, um, we were out there recently and there's, it looks like there's, uh, you know, the, the vegetation out there isn't the greatest looking, you know, it's not, it's not very thick, which I understand, but, um, yeah, our, our hope was trying to, you know, maintain at least a line of vegetation between our property and yours so that we could, uh, we could maintain some sort of screening there for you guys. Um, you know, we'll.
Can you show that, Andrew, on?
Yeah, I mean, it should be.
Show that to him?
Uh, I mean, I can.
The green line, right?
Yeah, it should be, it should be this green line here where my cursor is. There's a silk fence line right here and then beyond it, the bubbled line should show where we're proposing to keep vegetation, so I'm not sure if that's clear to you. I can zoom in or.
Okay.
Show you the area if you want, but. Okay, I guess, I guess my concern is that it, it looks pretty narrow and, and then when, when the builders come in, that just gets all wiped out and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so, so that's my only, my only concern is, is what kind of assurances are, do we get that, that that is gonna be adhered to or not just, or that that way, yeah, adhered to.
Well, what we could do, uh, what we could do there is we could also have the applicant, um, in, uh, did, well, you know, the silk fence should act as like a barrier, but I mean, if we wanna be absolutely sure on that, on that side to make sure that no, that no trees are cleared, you could also put up an orange, um, construction fence that would like delineate the area that they can't, you know, go into on that, uh, side to be, to be sure that, that the area, uh, that's proposed to be safe is indeed safe. So that's an option.
Andrew, is this showing your proposed limit of disturbance exceeding the, the green boundary of maintained vegetation?
Yeah, we can revise that and we can also provide, you know, we can show construction fencing on here as well if that's something that the, uh, Pete, if that's something that you want me to show on there, we can show that on there.
I mean, that's usually, that's usually like a foolproof, uh, thing, you know, for contractors. I mean, that goes up, that goes up the same time as, you know, the silk fence or before and, um, you know, it's meant, it's meant, it's meant to keep them out of the area.
Right. Yeah, we can show that. And Malcolm, we'll, we'll revise our limits of disturbance. I'm sorry for that.
No, it's okay. I am seeing now, though, a few different corners.
Yeah, I could, sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
I gotta fix that for you, so. I'll do that.
I mean, could you, could you possibly pull those landscaped areas in like a little bit more? And again, I haven't been out there, so I don't know, I don't know the extent of, you know, the trees, but if there are, if there are more trees between your, uh, you know, your green line there and, you know, the house, is there an opportunity to pull that landscaped, that landscaped area closer to the house?
Yeah, we can try doing something like that. I mean, we're gonna be putting in those infiltration trenches as well, so, um.
That's true. Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll try and make sure that there's at least, I don't know, if you wanna say a, a thickness of vegetation to remain, 10 feet of vegetation or more. We can try and do that. If that's something you want us to do.
Okay. Alright, um, David, with that, that's the only question you had at this time?
Yep, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, um, again, is there, if there's anybody out there that has uh, any questions or comments regarding this subdivision? Please raise your hand. Okay, so I guess if there is no one at this time. A question for. Uh, for the engineer regarding this, regarding the. Uh, the water, water supply issue. Is this something that we want to hold off on before we close the public hearing? Pete, are you there?
Uh, yeah, I mean, if we, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know, I didn't know if you meant for me or for Andrew.
Oh, no, sorry, not for, no, I meant for you, sorry.
Okay, sorry, um, well, if we do, if, uh, if we do close it, I think we run up against a time clock for approval, I think. Uh, if, um, you know, Paul could go away and I think there's a 62 day time period unless it's. Um, extended by mutual consent of the applicant, Paul, is that right?
Sorry about that, yeah, that's correct, that you're going to start that time, time clock, we have 62 days for approval. And these seem substantial, it may take a little bit more time, so. Um, you may want to consider just adjourning the public hearing at this point until so it's further resolved.
Okay, all right. Um, so. Bigger question is, what do we? What are we looking timeframe wise, Andrew?
Um, yeah, I, I'm not really sure what the, uh, what the health department's schedule is, is looking like right now, I'm sure they're not. I'm sure they're quite busy, so I'm not sure when they'll be able to get around to looking at this, so, I mean, I'm. I don't have too much experience in working with them, but I can imagine it taking quite a while for them to get around to this. Um, we can try and see if we can get conference call with them quicker. You know, I can reach out to Dan Keeler and see what his, his schedule looks like, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not too sure at the moment. Sorry not to answer the question, but.
Yeah, I think there has to be a decision of whether or not there's going to be walls or extension of the district before.
Right.
I mean, perhaps, perhaps we may want to, we may want to think about extending it out to our first meeting in May, I mean, I, I would think that it would take. Um, well, I don't know, maybe, maybe the second, maybe the second meeting in April, I don't know what the dates are, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking.
The 18th or something.
Yeah, I mean.
Ross, don't say something.
Chris, we have a couple of raised hands. We have a couple of raised hands.
Yeah, I have a message here that it's Pamela Smith had her hand up.
Yes, and Lori.
Okay, and Lori also, yes, the, okay. So it's just. Before we pick a date, let's get the comments from. I guess it's Pamela Smith, you could unmute yourself. Okay, Pamela, I guess, if you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, Pamela Smith, three Losi Road.
Okay. And if you could state the, uh, the concerns that you have.
Yeah, um, we have no intention of cutting down any of those trees, so I, I don't know what the big issue is with that.
The house. Okay, uh, again, we're, yeah, we're not going to have, um, if they're just going to leave them, that's fine, have the engineer address that. On, um. Have the engineer address that on the plan. If he could further delineate what he's going to, what's going to be cut and what's not going to be cut. And then that can be, you know, resubmitted. Okay?
We go again, more.
I, I don't understand what all this means, I mean, is this going to take forever and ever and ever to get this thing going or?
It's not, but the, the, the water supply issue needs to be addressed.
I understand that.
Before we can make it, before we can make a decision. Okay, so that, that seems to be the, the largest, your engineer, you should probably consult with him. Um, regarding any of the other questions that were brought up this evening, the, the more detail we have on the plan. Um, that can be shown to everybody, I think the easier this will be.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I guess there was also. Lori, uh, I guess Lori had some comments. You have your hand up?
I'm trying to unmute.
Okay, you're unmuted now, Lori, if you could, uh, state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Lori Anne Schmack, 35 Mina Drive, Wappingers Falls. My concern is that I grew up on that property and from, I am 50 years old. So 50 years ago, when I was born, there was a problem on that property with the water, bleach fields, the septic and it, and it. What you will do to that town by putting that gas station in will be damaging.
Okay, Lori, we're not, Lori, please, we're not here. Okay, if it has something to do with this particular subdivision, I'll, we'll listen to the comments you have regarding this particular project. Um, this gas station will have a public hearing at a future date and you will have your opportunity to speak at that time regarding that, okay? Okay, thank you, all right. Okay, so if there's no one else that wishes to speak on behalf of this application. I guess.
Close the public hearing.
Well, I think we're. We're not, we're not going to close it this evening, I believe we're going to.
Now, we want to.
We're going to adjourn it. Do I?
Chris, we have another person.
You have another person?
Yes, Abby.
Okay, Abby, um. You go ahead and. Are you there? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm here, are you here?
Okay, Abby, if you could please state your name and address for the record?
Hi, uh, this is Abby Peckman, 58 Marlerville Road, um, I was just hoping for a quick clarification.
Okay, Abby, is, is this particular, it has to do with this project or you're talking about the project near your home?
Um, I was asking for a clarification on what specifically we're able to ask questions on. Um, I would just love a little more detail on that to make sure I'm in the.
Okay, so. The standard procedure for planning board meetings is, um, we only allow pub, uh, public comments. On items that are, are open for a public hearing. Um, this evening, we have two items on that are open for public hearing. One is the adjourned, uh, public hearing for the Smith three lot subdivision, um, which we are currently looking at. And we're also going to have, um, a public hearing which we're opening tonight regarding, uh, Downey Energy Liquid Propane. Um, which is on Old Route Nine, uh, down near NNS Supply. Uh, those are the only two items we're going to have discussion on this evening. Um, we do have discussion regarding the Gasland, but that's just for the planning board members and our professional staff. To have discussions with the applicant and his professionals.
So we're not going to be given an opportunity to speak on Gasland?
Not this evening.
Uh, but later.
There, there will be a public hearing in the future, um, that date will be decided upon, uh, this evening.
Fabulous, thank you for the clarification.
But that will be, that will be published, uh, the, be on the agenda on the town website and, um. I imagine it will be circulated.
Great, thank you, um, and so the, you, you were mentioning something on petroleum, is that in the same location?
Which, which did you say, I didn't hear you.
Um, I believe you mentioned something on petroleum, uh, or something of that sort, is that in the same location?
No, that's an old Route Nine down by NNS Supply.
Okay, I gotcha, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Check here.
I'll respond to Carrie.
Right, I have Carrie Gorman.
No, I'll respond to Carrie.
Oh, you responded to her?
Oh. Okay. I'll respond to her off the record, I'll respond to her off the record.
Okay, yeah, no, I got it, I guess she's only saying that we're. Right, for the subdivision at this point. Okay, um. I'll make one last call again, anybody regarding this subdivision that has any comments? Raise your hand. Okay. So if there's nobody. Else that wishes to speak. Again, maybe, uh, may. Again, Pete did, um, Pete Sotera, did you, you said that the, um. It may take some time with the health department and their current.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say, I would say that, uh, at a minimum, it would, uh, we should look at the second meeting in, uh, you know, April. I don't have the date, I think that's the 18th or.
It's the 19th.
19th, okay, I mean, that might, that might be one, I don't know if the first meeting like is May and, uh, May, you know, is too far out, but. I mean, I would think, I would, I would think by the second meeting, uh, in May, that they should have some indication from, you know, the health department as to. Um, whether they're going to be allowed to proceed with, um, you know, wells or. Or whether they have to look at extending the water district, so I, I mean, I would, I, I would say we should be, we should be okay with the 19th.
Okay, so the 19th of April?
I would agree with that.
Okay, all right, so at this point, um, I know we did have a motion, I forgot who made it to, to adjourn the public hearing at this time. Who had made that, that motion?
And that was Paul.
That was me.
Okay, so Paul, if we, uh, amend that motion to adjourn the public hearing until, um. April the 19th? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I'll second.
Marco's got the second on that, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any members that are opposed? Okay, so motion carries, so we're adjourning the public hearing to April the 19th. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome, have a good evening.
Take care.
Okay. All right, um, our next item on the agenda this evening is public hearing regarding Downey Energy Liquid Propane Storage. Um, get a motion to open the public hearing.
Don't move.
Okay, motion's made, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, all right, motion carries. Do we, do we have the, um. Applicants engineer this evening for the project? Let's see, uh, Al Capelli, we need to, uh, need to unmute yourself or if we get Tom to assist you with that? Okay. Okay, good evening.
How are you?
Good.
Okay, so we're here this evening to, uh. Discuss, uh, the applicant Downey Oil, um. Is looking to construct a liquid propane, uh, facility on Old Route Nine. On approximately six acres, uh, on the west side of Old Route Nine that carries through to Route Nine itself. The, um, Old Route Nine, as we all know, is a pretty, um, pretty industrialized, um. Street, if you will, in terms of the number of heavy industrial businesses, it's not a. Commercial or general business type zone. Uh, so we feel that a use such as this, uh. Is, uh, would fit into that neighborhood, so what we're looking to do is install. Two 45,000 gallon above ground liquid propane storage tanks. The size of which will be about 11 feet diameter by 65 feet long. The, uh, facility would be for, uh, Downey and his trucks only, this is not intended to be a. Wholesale or open to the public type of liquid propane facility. We, um, the large tanks would be filled, um, I'll say primarily in the evening. By, uh, large, large tanker trucks. And then during the day, uh, just small cocktail trucks, if you will, that you see. Um, uh, delivering a propane to, will be coming to the site several times a day to fill up. And deliver, uh, liquid propane to the respective commercial and residential, uh. Businesses. There, uh, will be a, uh, in a, in additional small little detached building. To, um, to serve the site 30 feet by 60 feet. The site will be completely fenced in. Um, right now with a chain link fence to make it fully secure. What is also being proposed is a 30,000 gallon underground water. Uh, storage tank for fire suppression service. That would feed a, um, just off-site, uh, fire hydrant. We have, and our consultant has been in touch with the fire department, uh, the fire inspector, uh, in the town of Wappingers. Um, and, and work closely with them, uh, to, to discuss all the safety features. Uh, and the training practices that would be put in place before this facility, uh, would be operational. Um, so they're well aware and they're, um, onboard with, um, what we're looking to do. Um, the site will be serviced by, uh, an onsite sewage disposal system and a private well. And, uh, pretty much, um, pretty much that's it.
Okay, um. All right, so it's basic overview of the project.
Correct for the public.
You did receive the, uh, the letter from both the planner and the engineer?
That's correct.
Okay, um. Maybe we'll start with the engineers first and, uh, he could kind of run through it just so we can. Make sure that all his items are.
Yeah, I'll just do, I'll just do a quick, uh, like summary, uh, um, Al, uh, did, um, could you update the board at all on where you stand as far as working with, uh, the DEC on the wetland permit?
You know, I, I, I should have asked Mike Nowicki, who's been handling all that, uh, for us, Pete, and, and I was remiss in doing that, so. Uh, the applications, uh, uh, obviously are in and we've been dealing with them for, for a, uh, a good period of time. Uh, not that there's wetlands per se on the property, but across the street, if you will, um.
No, it's the buffer, right, it's the buffer.
That's correct, so it's just the. Um, I, I guess, you know, without saying the bureaucratic nature of, of doing this, this permitting process, it just takes. An awful long time, but that has been submitted, um, as has the, uh, the health department, uh, submittal as well. For the, uh, water and, and, uh, for the well in the septic, so, um. Yeah, I think a lot of that was worked out. Prior to the, the, the true permitting, if you will, uh, a lot of back and forth, if you remember, we weren't before you for many. Many months as we were trying to do the little tug of war with the health, with the, uh, with the DEC, uh, but I think, uh, between Mike Nowicki and, and Troy. Uh, our engineer, I think they have that pretty, uh. between Mike Nowicki and, and Troy, uh, our engineer, I think they have that pretty, uh, pretty much in hand.
Okay, um, you know, besides that, we had a bunch of, you know, minor comments as far as, you know, the plans go. I guess the, you know, the only one that I want to mention is, uh, that we did get comments, or the town got comments from the Fire Prevention Bureau, um, as far as, uh, like, training, um. We will have, I think we should go, uh, and specify on the, uh, plan when that, when that training, uh, will take place. I assume it should be before, uh, a C O is issued, but that's not really my decision, but, um, we should, we should go state on the plans when that training will take, take place, so we make sure that, you know, it's done. And then, uh, they also talked about a hydrant on the northeast corner of the property. Um. And I don't, I don't have, I don't have the plans open, uh, in front of me, but I don't remember if that was on there, uh, yet or not.
Yes, I'll, I'll, I, if I can interject there, I think what, what we had done, uh, I had spoken to Howard Prager, uh, and I had asked, uh, Howard to intervene and, uh, speak to, I think, Chairman Flower, perhaps, um, uh, the local fire chief, um, about the location of the hydrant, um, and he had gotten back to me and in a follow-up memo from, from the fire, uh, chief, I believe, fire department, um, there was a mention of putting it on the uh, north side of the entrance there. Our plans currently show it on the south side, just south of our southerly, uh, entrance. As everybody knows, there's a one-way in and one-way out, north and south. And the reason why I had put the, um, fire hydrant on the south side because it was closer to, um, to our, our, our fire suppression tank underground, and I didn't have to go across that, that, uh, bio-retentioned area we have in the front. So we know we have to do a fire hydrant. Um, again, Howard and, and, and Bruce and the fire chief suggested the north, north, uh, side of the property. We have it on a south, so I figure that at some point in time, uh, you know, hopefully shortly, we'll talk to them about, um, if, if, if putting it on the southerly portion of the, of the, of the site, um, could be accommodated, if you will. So again, we're not bringing a pipe all the way across the fire retention area. But that, that fire hydrant is shown on the plan, so.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Um, so we'll have a, well, you know, so the plan will have to be updated for that. And then, uh, I, uh, we had a bunch of, uh, what I would call relatively minor comments on the stormwater pollution prevention plan. I did talk to the engineer today, Troy Wojewski. And, um, you know, we went over them and, uh, you know, he, um, uh, agreed there wasn't anything there that, you know, was major. So I told him that I would put him in contact with our person who was looking at, you know, the SWIP, and they could just, uh, you know, go over things so that, you know, the next time, uh, things are, you know, handed in, um, you know, we, uh, you know, hopefully, hopefully won't have any more comments on it. So we'll have, we'll have those two work um, together and, um, that, uh, that is, that is pretty much it for our comments.
Okay, um, Malcolm?
Our comments were quite minor. Let me just take a look at them. And I did see your response to the comments. Um, mostly they are, uh, typos, non-substantive issues that I think can be easily resolved. Um. I see the point out that you mentioned in your response regarding the bollard, uh, the space in between the bollards.
Yes.
That call-out, I think, is a little vague. Um, it could also mean the height of the bollard.
Okay, we'll clarify that. Not a problem.
Perfect.
Understood, okay.
And, uh, obviously, the, um, uh, the corrections to the bulk table.
Yes.
Um, as for the switchgrass locations, uh, I looked for your, uh, the, the note that you mentioned.
Yes.
And I'm assuming that it's buried in that long, long list of standard landscaping comments.
No, there's a separate call-out to the right of, 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 of the plan on KDA seven that's, that suggests that the switch grass is, is, uh, to be installed ten feet on center in each, uh, in each direction. You have, um.
You do have a section under, um.
Let me see here.
Section under the notes specifically to bio-retention? I didn't see it there with the other bio-retention notes.
Okay.
You might consider putting it there.
Okay, that's fine. We can add it, but again, immediately to the right of the bio-retention area, it says, uh.
You've got your spacing.
Eighty G I evenly spaced ten feet on center at the bottom, uh, of the, uh, bio-retention area. But that's okay. If clarification is needed, uh, we have no problem to add it to, to the general notes, the landscaping notes, no big deal at all.
And, uh.
And the other, and the other, the other thing, minor, albeit.
The lighting, yeah.
Is, is the lighting.
I think that would be very easy. As you mentioned, I think if you meant, if you move it a foot over, you would avoid that problem completely.
Probably. I mean, we're only over like a foot or two, and we didn't want to bury the light fixture itself, um, in the bio-retention area, um, um.
It could, but as you also mentioned, it could also be something to do with the fixture.
That's correct. That's correct. And what Malcolm is alluding to, there was a little on the north property line there at the front entrance driveway, there was a tiny bit of, um, of light.
Light trespass, if you will.
Yeah. Uh, very, very minor, but, um, and again, we know that, that on paper, it's really not that much of a science, but still, we'll do what we need to and resubmit the photo metrics so that it's, uh, it's, it's entirely, there's no slight spill over at all. Not a big deal.
That'd be perfect.
Minor, minor.
Okay, um. All right, so I guess if, uh, gone through all that, we could go ahead and, uh, I guess we can open up the floor for public comment regarding this project. Um, so at this time, anybody that wishes to speak on behalf of this Downey Energy project, if you could raise your hand. Um, and then we can go ahead and, uh, open the floor to you for some comments.
Mary's iPad. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Unmute. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mary, we can hear you.
Okay, my name is Mary McGary. I live at one thirty-three Old Route Nine. Um, so this project is going to be on my road. I have several, uh, comments. Uh, my first comment is, I believe this property is zoned H B, which is highway business. Um, both the egress and regress are going to be in and out of Old Route Nine, not onto Route Nine, which is the highway. So I have some concerns about the current zoning because this is Old Route Nine. It's no longer Main Route Nine. That's number one. Number two, um, I disagree with the engineer. This is a mixed area. There are homes on this road. The Fishkill portion of this road is zoned G B. Directly across from where this project is going to be, there are homes, although those homes may be zoned property-wise G B. It is not an industrial area. Um, in addition to that, I have several concerns. I know that New York State no longer requires CECL to have, um, a public hearing prior to you guys determining the CECL. So I'd like to throw a few ideas out here to you. I'm really concerned about the traffic, mainly because what was said was the big trucks will be coming in in the evening. It's propane, highly flammable. The only traffic light is on the northern end of the road. So that means whether they come in north or south, if they need to go south, they have to go down the southern end of the road. So these trucks will be going by my home. I'm concerned about that. I'm very concerned about that. I just don't understand, um, why you would think industrial would be in a highway business or G B zone. Those are my comments for now. I'll be keeping an eye on the project. Um, you really need to look at the wetlands. You need to look at the traffic patterns. You need to look at the safety concerns. Is there going to be full-time security in this facility when it, if it's up and running for safety purposes? Those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you for the comments. All right, do we have anyone else that wishes to speak on behalf of this project? There is anyone? If you could, please raise your hand. Okay.
Uh, Dan Silvestri.
Okay, Dan. Dan, if, uh, hi, Dan, if you could give your name and address for the record, please.
Yep, I'm Dan Silvestri. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I'm Dan Silvestri. I, uh, have three properties in the town of Wapengers slash, uh, Houstonville Fire District that are in close proximity of the, uh, proposed L P bulk storage facility. I have one lot, which is twenty-one hundred feet away. I have a tenant with a newborn about five hundred feet away, and I have a business about nine hundred feet away, such as south of it. But thi- this is not my primary concern of voicing my opinion. I'm a volunteer firefighter for Rombell Fire Company for twenty-seven years. Every year, we're required to take mandatory hazmat training, which is usually taught by, uh, County Car sixty-one, which is, uh, Steve Van Bjorn, who's a chief and deputy coordinator of the Duchess County Hazmat Team. Before I go any further, I know a lot of you people, and I hope what I say doesn't offend anybody, because especially you, Al, you do business together, but I gotta, I gotta say, I gotta, I can't let this go. Um. L P gas is often one of the topics we discuss in our classes, and we're taught on how to respond to such incidents. We're taught on how to use the Emergency Response Guidebook published by the U S D O T. The guidebook assists us firefighters in identifying the potential hazards, notes to the public safety concerns, uh, guides us in proper emergency response procedures, and also securing the scene. It also gives us initial and protective evacuation distances. My cursory familiarization with the site plan looks like we have two tanks, roughly forty thousand gallons apiece. Both natural and L P gas are, uh, common substances which we had, could have devastating impacts on the public and first responders when they leak or find a condition source. When L P is heated, it is engulfed, and it is engulfed in a flame. It causes a buildup of vapor pressure within the tank, which overwhelms the safety relief valves and can lead to tank failure. This type of explosion is called a blebby. There's a lot of cases out throughout the history that talk about this, but this blebby is a, and a shortcut way of saying a boiling, boiling liquid expansion vapor explosion. These forty thousand gallons of liquid propane will expand two hundred seventy percent and have a fire to potential of ten million eight hundred gallons of vapor. That's a lot, that's a, that's, that's significant, and that's one tank. On page three seventy-six of the Emergency Response Guidebook, it gives us pertinent data on various tanks capacities. It gives us, uh, approximate times of tank failure with inflammation, pinjement, fireball radiuses, ex, uh, when, when an explosion takes place, emergency response distances that we, firefighters should maintain, minimum preferred evacuation distances, and the necessary cooling water flow rates that we have to maintain on the tank to keep it cool, to prevent a blebby. The, in my case, the guidebook did reference a tank containing about thirty-seven thousand gallons. This is pretty representative of our proposed forty thousand gallons. So here's some of the stats that I'll refer, and I'll refer back to in a moment. The minimum response time from the time of flame and pinjement on a tag is nine minutes. Fireball radius, and I'll round these numbers off, three hundred seventy-five feet. Emergency response distance, fifteen hundred feet. Minimum evacuation distance, fifty-six hundred feet. Preferred evacuation distance, seventy-two hundred feet. Now, if you know, you may, if you remember, fifty-two hundred and eighty feet is a mile. So we're talking over a mile of, uh, evacuation, the preferred evacuation. And the cooling water flow rate, we need to move a thousand gallons per minute. The emergency response times for first responders vary widely in Duchess County. They average around one to ten minutes based on the day and time and the location of the, oh, yeah, they are. Let's say Houstonville, which is, this is in their district. Uh, response, their response time is five minutes for this site. And it's on the outskirts, outskirts of their southern district line. Let's say it takes another four to five minutes to drive their apparatus from the firehouse to the site. Now we're talking nine, ten minutes has elapsed. Compared this to the Emergency Response Guidebook of nine minutes being the minimum inflange time for a possible tank failure. Now the emergency response has just turned into a, not a, emergency fire response, has just turned into an emergency evacuation. If you recall, at the Emergency Response Guidebook stated the minimum evacuation, evacuation distance for an L P gas tank of this size is over one mile. This will now necessitate mutual aid companies bringing in additional companies, additional responses from at least five neighboring districts, East Fishkill, Nahakasak, um, Nahakasak, Village of Fishkill, Rombell, and perhaps the, uh, Chelsea. Thus, another, another five minutes of response time will lapse, waiting for mutual aid companies to respond and give their assistance. Do you still think six companies can evacuate all the homes and businesses within the circumference of almost one point four miles before a possible blebby? The site plan noted a thirty thousand gallon underground fire suppression tank with, with a dry hydrant, and that's located about a hundred thirty-five feet away from the L P tanks. I didn't see any provisions for a fire pump or a ma- automatic thermal barrier or a water spray system to cool down the tanks at this site. Let's say Houstonville responds to this and, and calls on, seeing other than the minimum nine-minute, uh, minimum time at the tank failure. They hook up to a dry hydrant, and again, they're only a hundred thirty-five feet away from the burning tank. Emergency Response Guidebook recommends a minimum response distance of fifteen hundred feet from the burning tank. And with a fire potential fireball radius of three hundred and seventy-five feet, they're gonna be incinerated. They, by the time you set up the, the, it's good and, and cool down the tank. Now, the Emergency Response Guidebook recommends a minimum rate of cooling water of a thousand gallons a minute. That means that thirty thousand gallon tank of water will give us approximately thirty minutes of time to establish a water source for which there is none in that area. There's no hydrant system or anything. And I doubt a reliable tanker relay can be established to keep the tanks cool enough and not have that though either or, or both tanks explode until, and then we have to wait for forty thousand gallons of L P B tank to be burnt off. Keep in mind, you can only cool the tank to prevent a blebby. The International Fire Service Training Association recommends if a continuous water, of, of water cannot be available, we're supposed to withdraw and isolate the area and use unmanned nozzles, and if possible, let, let it burn.
Man, Dan, I gotta, I can't keep, you gotta get to the, to the, to the issue here. I gotta keep the meeting moving. Um, I mean, I, I know where you're, where you're coming from with the information, um. Uh, we can get a, um, the applicant has a fire protection specialist, uh, that, um, can provide some more detail regarding all the information that you're bringing up. Um, they have been working with the fire district. Um, if you, if you have something in writing, if you could kind of submit that, um, you know, to the planning board secretary, and she could distribute that to us. Um, just, in the, in this, this, the sake of time, I don't have a lot of time this evening to keep, um, going. Usually, we try to hold public comment till like three minutes.
I understand.
So, yeah, whatever questions you have, if, uh, keep it direct and to the point, I'd appreciate it.
Can I have about one minute to, to finish? Can I close that out, Bruce?
Go ahead. If you, if you had a minute's worth of stuff, then that's fine. Go ahead.
All right. I noticed, uh, the tanks were installed parallel to Route Nine in a north-south orientation. When a tank blebby's, it usually ends up and propels in the opposite direction of the failure. This would re- represent a configuration, the tank configuration to projectile through any supply or any points north or south through str- strictly diesel and any points, uh, south, including me. So my, I, if my voice opposition to the, is in vain, I'd like for the special permit L P storage tank, then maybe to reconsider two site plan revisions. Install a fire pump with a deluge system utilizing thirty thousand gallons of fire, uh, suppression tank. Install a fire pump with a deluge system utilizing 30,000 gallons of fire suppression tank and start the cooling immediately. This will buy fire personnel at least 30 minutes. And two, reposition the tanks in an east-west orientation. I know it's not cost effective, but they would be propelled if they should fail into the Greenfly Swamp across the street or west, uh, east into the wetlands, east of the property with less property exposure and hopefully life loss. The best outcome for this public hearing is to relocate the tanks to a more remote rural site and with less real estate and people density. And in closing, reconsider the hazards and risks of this type of business use in this property. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We'll have your address concerned.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, is there anyone else, um, who wishes to speak this evening on this application? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, uh, Tom, is there anybody that, uh? Okay, I was confirming. All right, so, Al, um, I mean, obviously, we had a, you know, a couple of, a couple of items that have come up this evening regarding the project.
I'm sorry, we do have Jody Amad in here tonight, Bruce. I don't know for purposes of brevity if you wanted to, discuss those fire-related items at a later date, uh, or would you want to have Jody respond to, um, some of Dan's comments, or how, how do you feel you want to approach that? What?
So, I think at this point, I mean, they could probably be, you know, probably should be put in writing, uh, the comments just so we have them for the record, uh, so, you know, she can address that in a, um, you know, in some type of a memo back to the board, uh, so that that could be, you know, put out to the public. Also, I guess any other, you know, the open issues we have regarding the planners and, uh, you know, engineers' comments should also be addressed. Let me just, uh, go ask the engineer or Pete to, I mean, how, do you feel that there's a lot left that has to be addressed here? Or?
Well, I mean, you know, I'm not a, uh, I'm not a, a fire expert and a fire code expert, so I, you know, I sur, I don't know. I, you know, I don't know the extent of how long that that would take, but, uh, as far as, as far as our comments go, um, I think that our comments can be addressed relatively, you know, quickly. Uh, they, um, you know, I, uh, I would like to see something back from, uh, the DEC and then, um, Al, I'm sorry, did you say that you've already submitted to, submitted to the county health department?
Well, 100%, we've, we've gotten responses back from Dan as, uh, uh, already as well. So that's, that's in its second, second iteration, if you will. Yep.
Okay.
We're close, we're close there.
Okay. And Malcolm?
I mean, I would, I mean, I would say maybe go for the second meeting in, uh, like April again.
Yeah, well, I guess the question's gonna come up is should we adjourn the public hearing or should we, you know, close it at this point? I, I think we're, we might be a little too soon to close it. Uh, I think we should probably leave it, um.
I think we should adjourn it.
Adjourn it to a future date?
Yes.
Yep, okay, and?
A lot of information was brought to light this evening. I think we should adjourn it for more discussion.
All right, so, um, so my question is, is as per the engineers, uh, he's figuring that the second meeting in April, which looks like, uh, April the 19th. Um, so we can adjourn the public hearing, I guess if we get a, a motion to do so.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn the public hearing, April the 19th. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, so there's none, the motion carries. So at this time, Al, we, we will adjourn the public hearing. We'll get the, the last of these items addressed, then hopefully at the next meeting, we can move forward from there.
Okay, I know, I know Danny had a lot of stuff he put on the table there. I'm, I'm sure in, 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 uh, in meetings past and certainly before the town board, uh, uh, many, many months ago, we had Jody make a presentation, uh, um, a, a very good presentation, and we've only heard one side unfortunately tonight, Dan's side. He had some very good points. I'm not gonna dispute that. Our professional, I'm sure, would in fact, uh, counter many of the, uh, the issues. And, um, we certainly would, uh, would be open to Jody, our consultant, even meeting with Dan, uh, who's right down the street from my office and, uh, and try to make him satisfied and, and everyone else as well. As far as Malcolm and Pete's comments, I think they're minor in nature and certainly they'll be taken care of, uh, by the next meeting. I can't speak about the DEC or the health department, of course, but, uh, we'll see what we can do to speed that along.
Okay, and then the other open item is still is, uh, touching base with the fire department. Just to confirm everything, obviously, sounds like the, you know, the issue with the, uh, placement of fire hydrant, uh, you know, that location, uh, if you can get, you know, we can get that resolved, uh, prior to that next meeting, that would.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so I guess at this point though, um, I guess we'll bring this back up on the, on the eight, on the 19th.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, um, our next item on the agenda this evening is a discussion regarding Over Creek Lot Line realignment. Actually, this project, uh, we just need to vote on a final approval. Um, we're actually preliminary and final subdivision plat approval for the lot line realignment. So do we have the applicant's engineer? Yes, we do. We need to, uh, unu Kyle Ahern. And? Okay. All right.
Everyone, thank you.
All right, good evening. Um, Kyle, did, uh, you receive the, um, uh, the resolution from the planner?
I did, yes.
Okay, and no questions or concerns with what's been, uh, put together?
None.
Okay. All right, so at this point, um, the only thing we need to do with this application is, uh, we need a motion to approve the resolution of preliminary and final subdivision plat approval, uh, for a lot line realignment. Um, do we have somebody who wants to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Ralph? Uh, Marco has made the second. Can we get a roll call vote, please, by the secretary?
Is this a rule?
Appears he's muted.
Yeah, seems he's muted again. Okay, that?
Aye, sir, aye.
Caprino?
Aye.
Mr. Marinacho?
Aye.
Mr. Maselli?
Aye.
Mr. Parikos?
Aye.
Mr. Flower?
Aye. Okay, so, um, at this point, everything's approved and we'll move forward from there.
All right, thank you, Al.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
All right, our next item on the agenda this evening is, uh, discussion regarding Gasland Petroleum on Route 9D in Houstonville. Yeah, see, we have the applicant's engineers on the, on the line. Mr. Lapine?
Good morning, Mr., evening, Mr. Chairman. Nicholas Ward-Willis, counsel for the applicant Gasland. I'm gonna start us off, uh, tonight. And then, and then I'm gonna, I'm, I'm joined with, uh, Mr. Lapine from the Chasing Group, as well as our traffic engineer, Phil Greeley, as well as our architect, Keith Schofield. So I'm gonna be very brief with my introductory comments because I do know it's, it's been a long evening, and I want Mr. Lapine to provide an overview of the project. But just briefly, since we were last before the board, our client acquired an additional parcel of land on the corner of Route 9D and New Hamburg Road, and as reflected in the revised plan submitted, we, we've modified the project to reflect that. What I want to briefly do is just discuss the zoning because there's been some questions raised in the past and in some of the comments that we've submitted letters, uh, responding to those comments about compliance of our project. Um, you know, the proposed project to construct a gasoline filling station in the 3,800 square foot convenience and retail store, those are all permitted uses within the Hamlet Mixed Zone District. Gasoline filling stations are permitted by special use permits pursuant to the town code. Construction of the mixed-use development is also a permitted special use permit in the zoning code, as well as the ability to place, um, apartments, which we proposed four of them, above the, um, retail use. The project requires two special use permits, site plan approval, and a re-subdivision of the five lots. Um, it's zoning compliant with no variances, um, required. We've also addressed before how we believe this project is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. We've, uh, submitted a number of letters that detail. Just briefly summarizing, the proposed action will serve residents and employees of nearby businesses and visitors in the area. It's consistent with the Hamlet-style land use is located at the intersections, and as recognized in the town's comprehensive plan, this is an area with an opportunity for redesign and improvement to promote the character of the Hamlet. And as you may recall, at one of the prior meetings, we went through great detail to go through the architecture. And I think that's probably the one thing that we had agreement on from the public, that the architecture was very good and reflected the, um, the Hamlet character, and there was, uh, much support for the architecture which we're carrying through with this redesign. And additionally, the addition of sidewalks, um, and the appropriate architecturally mixed-use development is a significant step towards achieving the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan calls for new development in the Houstonville District to include housing and retail use, which we're providing. So, you know, we think, and I won't, I'll go into more detail in our written submissions and our public hearing, but we believe this is, in addition to being zoning compliant, is compliant with the comprehensive plan. Um, we've previously, uh, spoke with the town about the need to re-notices. We will be putting up new signs because we've added the one property. We will be, um, re-noticing the public hearing and, when scheduled, and also providing notice, which I believe the towns are already done in compliance with the general municipal law, and it's being recirculated. Uh, so we look forward to receiving comments from the board and the public. And I want to turn it over to Chris Lapine to provide you with an overview now of the revised plans. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, good evening, Chairman. Uh, this is Christopher Lapine. If I may, uh, be allowed to share my screen?
Uh, yes, if you could, uh, Tom, if you could allow him to share.
Okay, so, um, when we were before you in December of, uh, 2020, this was the previous plan that we had, uh, shown you. This was a 2,650 square foot, uh, convenience store with, uh, four pump islands and eight fueling positions. Uh, we had two apartments located above the, uh, convenience store in 21 parking spaces. Uh, access to the site at that time was via a right turn-in, right turn-out only along Route 9D. The project itself encompassed 1.12 acres, which was, uh, 2,357 through 2,365 Route 9D. Since our last application before you, uh, the applicant has acquired, uh, the 0.55 acre parcel immediately to the south of us, which is located at 123, 125 New Hamburg Road. That site currently consists of a, uh, multi-family residence, associated parking. With the addition of that project site, uh, it's given us an opportunity to kind of respond to some of the, uh, comments as it related to, uh, traffic in site circulation, along with, uh, further enhancing the architecture of what we were previously proposing for this project. From a traffic standpoint, I'll give a brief overview, and I'm going to let Phil Greeley, uh, speak a little bit more about that, uh, afterwards, with, we are still going to have a right-in, right-out along, uh, Route 9D. However, the acquisition of the adjoining property has provided us the opportunity to get access to New Hamburg Road. Uh, we've been working with both the DOT and Dutchess Department of, uh, Public Works, and, uh, we have a conceptual approval of the locations that we've identified on our plans. The access point along New Hamburg Road would be a full, full movement with restrictions during, uh, the hours of four to 6:00 PM, where left turns would be prohibited due to the traffic on that road. We focused our layout here with the new building, which is approximately 3,900 square feet, 2,400 square feet being a convenience store and 1,500 square feet being retail. We have four apartments above it. Uh, access to the apartments would be in the, uh, rear of the building. Uh, the front access would, uh, serve both the convenience store and the retail space. What we tried to do with, uh, the location of the building was, we tried to screen the adjoining residents with the layout of the building configuration that we have, and we focused the canopy and, and, and the activity associated with the, uh, turning movements more towards the intersection along New Hamburg Road and Route 9D, where it's a little bit more active. That way, trying to be, uh, conscientious of the neighboring, uh, properties, both to the west and the north of us. Uh, and that's, and you can see that with our, uh, the layout that we've provided. Um, the board, when we were previously before you for the, uh, last application, was concerned about the privacy of the neighbors, the surrounding neighbors, uh, even those that were joining us along Marlerville Road. Uh, the plans that we've submitted to, uh, have addressed that nature, where we are putting the eight-foot-high cedar fence that was recommended along the perimeter of the property. As we also indicated, we were looking to meander that fence so that we could save, uh, existing vegetation on the northern side of the property, and that's been displayed as well. We also focused the, uh, one of the comments that was brought up was the, uh, unloading of the, uh, fuel. And we focused that so that this, uh, we focused that being on the, uh, southwest, uh, southeastern corner of the site. This provides the greatest distance from any adjoining properties, uh, with that unloading, um, taking place. And we, and that was one of the comments that was also raised during the past public hearings. Um, we've got assigned parking, uh, for the apartments. We've given them the four, four spaces here on the southern side of the site. We also have two spaces, uh, that are adjoining the, uh, convenience store as well. That would be for guests. Overall, we, we, we think this plan that's before you, uh, addresses a, a, a number of the concerns that were raised at, at our past public hearings. Uh, as Nick mentioned, we have provided the pedestrian activity in the terms of, uh, sidewalks and in terms of, uh, New Hamburg Road and Route 9D. I would be remiss to acknowledge, uh, when we were submitting these plans, we were, uh, still in the process of working out some of the drainage configuration with the DOT. Uh, as we indicated at our last, uh, with our last, uh, plan, uh, the applicant intends on, uh, extending the water that's currently along New Hamburg Road. Uh, previously, we're looking at doing it to the, uh, northern end of our property adjacent to Route 9D. We think with this revised layout, uh, and, and modifications that are being made, uh, the applicant, uh, has the opportunity to extend the water from New Hamburg Road all the way to the, uh, northern portion of his property that abuts a residence about 75 feet from Marlerville Road. This may provide an opportunity, if an easement could be sought, uh, to improve the infrastructure, uh, along this area. I heard earlier tonight some concerns about, uh, individuals and their well and their water quality. This may be an opportunity from the town's to, uh, start addressing that, as this project can, uh, provide a means of, at least, uh, from an engineering standpoint and from an infrastructure standpoint, of providing a water connection, uh, between two areas that need it. To follow up on what, uh, Nick said, this project will require, uh, approval from the DOT and the Dutchess County DPW for the access points along their property. There will be some takings along the. There will be some takings along the uh Route nine D portion of our property as the DOT has requested. They haven't given us the extent of it, of the takings at this point, but we're working with them on that. It'll also require uh Duchess County Department of Health approval for our septic system. And water connection and town board uh approval for a connection to the United Water District and expansion of the uh onsite water line. At this point in time, what I'd like to do is I'd like to uh turn it over to Phil Greeley. Who can actually speak of the uh traffic uh scenario and then following that if uh. We can have Keith Schofield give a review of the architecture for the project.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris. If you could leave that plan up, please, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh Philip Greeley from Mazur Consulting. Just to add to what Chris described, um the land dedication along Route nine D. Uh to the state of New York will accommodate the sidewalk across the entire frontage. Um we will also be reconstructing the shoulder area and the curb line for our entire frontage along Route nine D. Uh and then also, as you can see on this plan, there will be some widening. Along New Hamburg Road, along our property frontage. Uh that will do two things. It will soften the movement if you're coming from east to west on Old Hopewell. Towards New Hamburg Road, uh that widening will actually soften that movement. Uh there'll be increased pavement uh area there, a new curb line and a sidewalk along the county highway. Um and there will be some land dedication there also. Uh one thing that is not shown on this plan is. We will also be extending the widening a little further to the west past our driveway. To create a a longer two lane approach to the traffic signal to help ease some of the traffic flow. Uh the traffic signal will be upgraded um to current standards with New York State DOT. Uh including updated actuation uh and. To improve the efficiency of traffic movements through the intersection. That will all be done at the owner's expense under a highway work permit uh with both the state DOT. And with Duchess County. Uh as Chris mentioned, uh because of the uh historical uh traffic backups. Uh when the train uh traffic, especially in the afternoon rush hour. Uh the county would like us to restrict left turns exiting from the driveway on New Hamburg Road. So we would have, you know, full movements there throughout the day except uh through at from the four to six. You could still make a left turn into this driveway, but exiting, uh they would like that to be prohibited. And uh we'll actually revisit that in the future to see if the if if the problems are still exist with train traffic. Uh that would remain and if uh it's not uh any uh problem with the signal upgrades. We would revisit that ability to uh uh remove that restriction, but for right now. Uh during that four to six time period, uh they would like that to be controlled. Uh they have that restriction of the locations on county roads. But our proposal here is to have good circulation throughout the site. Um much of the traffic going to this facility would be attracted from the existing traffic stream. Traffic from the south would make a left turn at the signal if they're coming from the south or southwest on nine D. Could make a left turn at the signal and in a right turn into the access. Um the pump islands on this plan were rotated, the county wanted us to rotate those. To ease traffic flow in and out of the pump areas. Um and you know, the the rest of the circulation, uh we've run turning tracks and. Uh we've shown the the vehicle of movements on the uh plan, so. Uh in essence, th- those are the improvements that we're gonna be doing, uh the access uh scheme. And the uh right now, we have conceptual approvals. And we will be going through full design approvals with both agencies uh as part of our permits. Um and that's pretty much a synopsis of where we are today.
Phil, if I can ask, we're also gonna be making some uh drainage improvements as our entire site drainage.
Correct.
Is routed through uh oil water separators and bio retention areas. And then is routed through an underground retention system into the DOT drainage system, so the.
Correct.
Discharge from our onsite improvements uh into the lawn areas uh associated with this project.
That's correct.
Uh Keith, I I'll bring up your elevation and you can uh just uh talk to uh to that. Keith Schofield?
Okay, there I am. I was muted for a second. So based on what the, a- as Chris showed the original site plan, uh we had uh come up with a conceptual elevation. And we had hip roofs and uh some brick and clabbered siding along with a lot of um. PVC based trims. And all that was based off of um a study that we did of all the buildings around this property. To show that we were still within the um the context. Of of all the materials um that could be found within the area. So back on to the um conceptual elevations. With this um newest layout, um we carried it into uh this building type. And in lieu of what we had previously previously shown as um a hip roof that was similar to um. The opposite corner across from the uh the basket shop. We we went with the uh the gable ends and some dormers um reflecting more of um. The the uh the roof lines that were similar on the building that was south on Route nine D just past. Brackets, the um clabbered siding, um the cultured stone that we are using around the base in lieu of brick. All had been materials that were uh discussed with the board and. And color scheme, a- all all these things we had discussed, so now it's just a regeneration of what our previous building was. Uh into a a much um, you know, a more appealing building uh than 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 the past one to fit in the layout. Again, the gas pumps will also uh a- and the canopy will reflect the same architecture that you see on the building.
Okay, um. Anybody, any of the board members have any questions for the applicant at this time regarding what's been proposed so far? Okay.
I do have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
The fence that goes around the perimeter of the property between the residents and this building, uh how how high is that gonna be?
Uh when we were at the um.
Is that gonna be able to leave in November? Traffic lights coming?
When we were at the public hearing in.
Yeah.
We were asked to place an eight foot high fence and that's what our plans depict.
Is there a way to figure out how the traffic uh lights coming into this because the projects change now? Um is gonna affect some of the residents in the back?
So the. Traffic lights coming along um. So. This particular uh the traffic light coming in this direction from a car would be blocked. By the building and this residence in the rear would not be impacted by it. There is a resident uh that's about located right here. Where these traffic lights, although this is elevation, I think two seventy. If you recall, we have a uh an elevation change along the western side of our property. But along the top of that wall, we also have a eight foot high fence as well. So that would block any traffic lights for impacting this apartment house. And once again, this house location is about right here, where you see this fifty fifty seven point two foot setback line. And our pumps are facing this direction. Now, as you enter into our site from New Hamburg Road. You you're a couple hundred feet away in elevation here. Where I think between the fence and the existing landscaping that's out there is going to uh minimize or reduce any impact. Associated with the traffic lights. You also have to remember, we do have the refuse enclosure area right here as well. So I think this and in the landscaping in the back is certainly going to uh minimize or address. Any of that lighting from protruding into the neighbors with this particular layout.
But you don't know that for sure, you're just speculating that.
Well, no, I can, I can tell you as I, that comes in from Route nine D.
I know that, I can see that. I'm talking about the other entrance way.
So this other entrance way, we have a refuse enclosure at this location.
Yeah.
We're not gonna have any headlight glare beyond this. Uh we do have vegetation over here. Uh and we have an eight foot high fence all the way down here. At the site, we're probably, you know, three hundred feet or more away. And we're maintaining all that existing uh landscaping there. If it would. If if it would alleviate any concerns, maybe one of the other things we can do is because. We have this small gap right here, which uh once again, it's going to be blocked by the propane tanks and the ice cooler that's right here. So we probably got between a sidewalk and the refuse enclosure, maybe an opportunity for ten feet. Of an opening, so if there's any little bit of light that may radiate through that crack, although there. As this car is coming in, it's coming in directly with this refuse enclosure. Uh we could extend the fence along this line here to. Just give you an extra level of comfort uh as it relates to that.
And do you have any landscaped tree row or anything along that back property?
Uh yeah, there's the existing uh landscaping along this back property here that we're maintaining and this is where our septic.
High enough to block anything, the site of the building from the, for the residents?
You know, I I I I I think there's a few things here. Uh as we indicated, we're maintaining the existing vegetation along the property line. And we are incorporating uh an eight foot high fence there. Um this area adjacent to the building is all septic system. We can't plant uh trees on top of a septic system.
I understand.
But I I think there's been a lot of care that's been taken into uh the architecture of this new building. Which I think greatly enhanced as compared to what we're currently looking at. Uh from a visual perspective of the uh residence at this time, uh they have a couple of beaten up garages. Uh that they look at in the backyard, uh a broken greenhouse and uh I believe a um. Kind of a dilapidated uh vinyl uh siding in this particular dwelling. So I think what we're proposing, much more of a greater enhancement in terms of what's being visualized. From a resident standpoint than what they're currently looking at.
Okay.
Any other, the board members have any questions? For the applicant?
One other comment, though, the building seems to be a bit high. Is there plans to do something in that attic area?
Um but I, it was more decorative um for the 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 dormers at this point. Um remember on the previous version, we had a a lower slope roof. And it was a a recommendation of the board to try and uh do a gable which. And and the dormers in which it it forces you to raise um the roof line to a steeper pitch.
Keith, in essence, this was a response to feedback or received from the planning board at the November.
Correct. We originally had a a a lower sloped uh hip roof, similar to the one that's across from the uh the nesting shop.
Okay, you guys just look at it a little bit more.
Alright, anybody else on the, on the board that has any um? Has any questions?
These are uh four one bedroom apartments still?
Yes.
Alright, um was.
As I say, Mr. Chairman, this was adjourned to the board's April fifth uh meeting for the continuation of a public hearing. So we're ready to present this in more detail of a public hearing that night.
Correct. I guess at this point, I know that the, there was some discussion with an alternate plan. I don't know, does any of the board members want to discuss that at all? Or is everybody satisfied with what's been submitted so far?
I think we should get everybody's review.
Well, we, we need to give, we need to give the applicant some direction this evening. That's, that's our, our concern. It's either.
Board members, I'm not talking about the public.
The what?
I'm talking about the board members. Is everybody put in their opinion on this yet?
Well, everybody's gotta make, I mean, if anybody else has any questions, or do we want to take a look at the alternate plan?
I I think we should take a look at it.
Do I take a look at it?
I agree.
Okay. So if you wanna um.
And her.
Kind of walk through the alternate plan. I know this was put together. With the applicant and uh the town staff. Uh I guess this was something that was um. Kind of put together last week. I don't know. If any, um any of the board members want to uh. Or have any questions regarding this plan?
I I can kind of walk through what we, what we did here. We, we received uh. So uh uh the comments from the uh town consultant uh asking if we've considered uh. Relocating the building and the canopy to bring the building more along the frontage of the uh of the site, similar to some of the existing buildings. Along on New Hamburg on the south side or uh to the north uh along Route nine D. So we, we've developed a, a plan of a similar sized building, a little bit of a different configuration. Uh we couldn't have that kind of jog that sticks out. It's more of a rectangular in nature. Where the building would be placed parallel to uh New Hamburg Road. And we would have uh entryways for the residential units along the New Hamburg roadside. We would have internal access to the convenience store uh and retail internally. And we would also have a connection from the uh Route nine D side as well. Uh this particular layout uh screens uh kind of the site. When you're at the intersection going on northbound on Route nine D and New Hamburg Road. Uh what it does though is it 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 kind of. Uh, what it does though is it, 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 it kind of focuses the activity a little bit more central uh to the uh, to the project site where uh we have a, a lot more uh car activity. And fueling activities being brought closer to the neighboring residents. Although we, we, we do have, and, and I mentioned, we have a slight increase in uh impervious area associated with this particular project. It would be about a four thousand square foot uh increase in imperviousness that we would need to address uh through some additional drainage practices. But what it does do is, you know, it, it kind of develops a, a building that's more in line with community character in essence with uh its proximity to the uh nine D and New Hamburg Road corridor. Uh, but as I indicated, uh, we, we do, we do. We've created a development here that is uh a little bit more open to the neighboring residents and it's not shielded as much by the uh, the proposed building. But uh, this is the plan that we've come up with. Entrances along New Hamburg Road are in the same location as well as the uh Route nine D location. Parking would be on the northern end of the site, which is adjacent to the uh building here. And our loading area um would be kind of on this, on the central northern portion of the site with the two fuel tanks. What we've done with this particular layout is we've put a, a landscape island adjacent to the um to the tanks because we didn't want this to kind of be a uh throughway uh for cars uh being over a fifty foot wide uh entranceway here. So what this really does is it helps channelize cars that are coming to this parking area. And then this only focuses on the loading and its ability to access around. So I, I'm more than willing to share any other comments or concerns that uh the board may have uh on this particular plan.
Okay. Any, any of the board members have any comments regarding this version of the plan?
Is a speed bump considered in this to keep traffic from cutting through to avoid the light?
We, we did not consider a uh speed bump. What we uh, what we tried to do with this particular plan, as I indicated, was to put kind of a landscape island here to minimize uh traffic coming in here. Uh, that's kind of the best deterrent we could come up with. If people are going to kind of try to drive around, that they're gonna drive around. Uh, I'm not sure how we can deter them from avoiding the light.
Need bumps. It's a deterrent. Um. Because they're gonna cut through. I like this version much better than the other one.
Do you have a rendering of what the side of the building on New Hamburg Road looks like?
We do not, not at this time.
Is that the apartment side?
Yes.
Are those, those are decks?
Those are decks and then there would be uh individual entryways for each of the units.
Any other board members have any questions?
Um, no, not really. I just see, I see good stuff in actually both of them. Um, this design looks like it's gonna be a lot easier for the tanker trucks to roll through when they refuel. Um, and it does look like a lot less light pollution or anything to the neighbors on this this drawing. Um, I actually wasn't wasn't as keen on the second drawing until I got a better look at it just now and a little more things were explained on it. But I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like a lot less light disturbance. I, I'd see the, the way they pull into the gas islands, the, the cars won't be facing the neighbors anymore. And it looks like they got that buffer there between the islands and the uh, the tanks, the in-ground tanks on that.
And uh. About a three foot buffer here and uh the, the only, you know, one of the drawbacks to this particular plan is, you know, the, the, the tanks are probably moved about a hundred feet. Uh, we did have them in this vicinity in the other layout. Uh, now we've got them a little bit closer uh just for the loading purposes. That'll all take place kind of within the view of evidence where it was screened before under the other plan because we had the, the building here.
Yeah, that looks like a much simpler layout to me to, just for everybody to move around and get around in there. You know, worse come the worst if we're worried about a little screening to the uh, looks like to um to the west there. Uh, that just raising that three foot buffer a little bit would, would help it out tremendously because there's not a lot of distance. Looks like only twenty-four feet between the island and the uh, and the buffer that's there. You know, so even a couple more feet on that buffer height wise would knock down any, any headlights coming through to the neighbors.
Um, I guess one of the other options you can, you can think about there is, and this is, you know, it's truly up to the board. Um, we do have uh an eight foot high fence here. Uh, I think, and we haven't gone into any detailed grading here, so I don't understand the grading implications. But I, I, I do think if you only have about a two foot elevation drop from here to the edge of the property and you have an.
Yeah, that would, that would put you at five feet. Yeah, yep.
That, that would more than provide enough uh screening from the headlights uh plus.
Yeah, probably. Yeah. Like I said, I can't see.
Some vegetation in that particular location. And, and once again, there, there was no light pollution coming at all here because as I said before, uh. You know, it.
Yeah, I, I remember the screening, the only, the only thing was the walkway, which is not really a big deal either. You're not gonna get a ton through there.
If, if you're looking for which one screams the best, I'm gonna be honest, the previous plan does. Uh, but we can, we can work and kind of create some natural barriers with some landscaping as well on this plan.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, there's, there's good, there's good and bad in both, but.
I think this one has a less.
Yeah, exactly. That, that, that's probably a good word that I was looking for is this one, this one I think has a little less impact. You know, and it, it's like I said, it's a little simpler, you know, and you get some screening from the building there to the pumps from uh um New Hackensack and uh. Yeah. Yeah, that, that's my comment, so.
Okay. Um. Any of the other board members, any comments uh just between the two different plans uh leaning any dire, uh one direction over the other uh like to kind of kind of determine at which direction is gonna have the applicant go forward at this point in time?
Yeah, I, I do want to show, I know there was a comment about impacts and, and I'm not sure if I mentioned it earlier, but this particular plan has almost about a four thousand square foot in, increase in impervious area uh compared to the previous plan. So that's something to consider as well when you're looking at the impacts.
Okay. Yeah. With the, with the additional uh impervious surface, are you gonna be able to um manage that, the runoff from it?
Yes, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have to come up with a new design, but I just wanted to make it trans, for purpose of transparency, you're talking impacts, lighting impacts. I wanted to also let you know about impervious impacts.
Okay, uh, I appreciate that. All right, uh, Paul, do you uh, Paul Freino, do you, you have any feelings?
I would just like to see that New Hamburg side of the building, what that would look like. I prefer this plan over the last one, but without seeing what that side of the building is gonna look like, it's hard to sign off on that, you know?
No, no, I know, and we're not, we're not, uh, tonight, we're really not looking to um you know, to, to give it a final approval. Obviously, we still have to do architectural review because they did change the building from
Right.
From the other plans. We still have to do a um, a review of also.
Well, I, I, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I think that basically the discussion tonight is just to have comments for the applicant to consider which one of the two plans he wants to put forward as his uh amendment application. And obviously, still have to conclude your secret and public hearing process and make the requisite determinations before there's any decision.
Yes, no, 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 exactly. But just, yeah, but trying to get some, you know, comments from all the board members just in the day. Gives the applicant direction of which way to go here this evening.
Yeah, you know what? It's Mark Hogan. I'm sorry. Um. If the building was basically the same as, as the first plan, I think I would actually prefer this, this plan here. Um, just a couple of things, like I said, this is a much easier in, easier out for the gas trucks, which would cause, you know, I, I, I'm assuming the first plan, if I remember correctly, it'd probably be drive over curbs where you come in from nine D. Um, because that little ass cut there. Um, but you know, it looks like we're avoiding all that and, and the trucks can get in and get in quicker and get off the road using this plan. Which a lot of times is a, is an issue. If there's a lot of traffic in there, you'll see the gas trucks can't get in all the way right away. And I think with this plan, they can get in to be a little safer.
Yep, and I agree. Okay, um.
If you want my opinion, uh, Bruce, I prefer the uh, the second plan.
Okay, so. All right, I appreciate that, Nick. Um. Any other concerns, Nick, that, that pop out to you that, that haven't been discussed yet?
No, I wouldn't. I'd like to see how they're gonna address the, the issues raised uh by the board members concerning the second plan. To see if that would uh satisfy us.
Okay. All right, who else? Um, we have uh Rob, uh, Rob Crew. He still here?
I'm here.
Okay, Rob, I, um, what, uh, do you have any um, any feelings or any concerns that need to?
No, no, you guys all said it well. I'm, I'm, I'm okay.
Okay, all right. Any uh, one way or the other, uh, either, either plan?
I'm kind of neutral. I'm just thinking, I was trying to make a decision. I, I, either way for me.
I know, yeah, a lot to take in at one time. Um, this evening, uh, all right. So I, I mean, we've, we've gone around, you know, the horn, we talked to, you know, we, uh, comments from all of the uh, the board members this evening. Um, I, I think it's you know, up to the applicant at this point to make a decision, I guess.
Hmm.
Which, which direction you would really like to go. Um, I mean, it's, a lot of people seem to be leaning towards the uh, the revised plan uh that we're looking at right now. Um, which probably is gonna require some revisions to the application, which has already been submitted.
Yeah, we, and we understand that and, you know, um. I, 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 I think part of this process is uh back and forth between us and the planning board and with the input of the public, uh, I, I, I think certainly makes for a better plan. Uh, I, when I'm hearing and I'm getting the sense of is uh, a majority of the board would like us to kind of proceed with this alternative plan with the building parallel to New Hamburg and start uh refining not only the site plan, but the architecture associated with this. Um, and see where we go uh from there. I think this is the preferred alternative to what we've previously submitted in our February uh drawing. Um, I don't think this particular drawing is going to impact the traffic, uh, which seems to be a uh one of the biggest levels of concern for this uh particular project. We don't see any modifications to what our current traffic proposals are as a result of this. I think this comes down to uh refining and redeveloping the site plan and managing the onsite storm order. Uh, this provides those pedestrian connections that the board and the comp plan seeks. Uh, we've still have the right units located uh above the top of the apartments. And I think we can uh create a nice streetscape with the architecture of this uh along the New Hamburg Road, uh, similar to what's currently there.
Okay, um.
If I'm reading that correct, this is the direction the board would like us to proceed in?
It seems to be from, you know, the comments that were uh, you know, that were being brought up tonight.
Okay.
So I think everybody's kind of more favorable to um the plan that's on the screen now. Uh, which is gonna take a little bit of work, uh, I guess to get ready for um, for a public hearing.
I think from speaking, we can have this, the plans ready for the April fifth hearing, so we'd like to still proceed with April fifth with this other plan.
Yeah, um, but with a recommendation by council, um, you know, with the revisions that that would probably come about with this application. You know, it's been recommended that we recirculate the plans, uh, you know, which could take up to thirty days. So I, I have feeling that that's probably looking to um move the public hearing back. Uh, that would probably, depending upon, once we can get everything out to everybody that's in, you know, that's an involved agency, um, we're probably uh maybe at the earliest would be April nineteenth, but it may even be, you know, the May the third meeting.
Um, would it, would it be possible in terms of, I know your submission is next Monday? If we were to provide the board a revised EAF? Uh, as we indicated, we can still provide you a copy of the uh traffic report that, that will remain unchanged. Uh, a site plan, landscaping plan and lighting plan. Seems like lighting's a, a concern here as well. Uh, to circulate those establishing yourself as lead agency again?
That, that would, I think that, that would be acceptable for circulation. And then, uh, Mr. Chairman, you also considered perhaps a separate night just for this hearing?
Yeah, um. Yeah, we did make mention, we did discuss that earlier. Um. What ends up coming up is is, I need to, um, is uh Barbara Roberti, are you still here with us?
I'm here, Bruce.
Okay, um, question regarding, I guess, if we were to hold this on a separate night, uh, obviously Mondays are, are currently um, you know, both the planning board and the town board meetings are held.
Correct.
Be with us an alternate night. Would it be better to do this on a, on a different night, on a um uh, you know, some other night other than a uh, a Monday?
Well, if you pick one of your further agendas, say April nineteenth or into May, you just couldn't put anything else on the agenda. I'm following the amount of people. And we're close to ninety people, so there is a limit of how many people can come in the building. So if you mix it with other projects, it would just be too difficult. Either that or you can pick the first or third Tuesday opposite ZBA or a Wednesday or a Thursday and make this a public hearing just for gas.
Yeah. Um, well, the question comes to um, to the secretary to be is do we have anything on for the April nineteenth meeting at this point in time?
Not at this time.
Uh, actually, we do. We, we, we put Downey Oil off to uh.
Yes, we have two projects then.
Yeah, we just adjourned, we just adjourned uh Downey Oil to the nineteenth.
And Smith.
And, and Smith.
And Smith also.
What about the first Monday in May? I don't think we have anything that far out.
Yeah, I think that. Yep.
We don't have anything on May third.
There's nothing on for the May third meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, um. Yeah, I mean, at this point, I mean, that would probably be the safest bet is to put this off to, to May the third. I think that would be the safest option for us and we'll just hold this to um, an evening just for Gasland. Uh, we'll hold the public hearing that evening. Um, and then we will go from there.
So Bruce, um, you might want to ask Tom Wood. But then what will we do on the fifth? Will we just open and adjourn it again to May third? We also need to republish and resend out to the adjourning. We also need to republish and resend out to the adjourning property owners and have signs put on the lawn so that the public is well noticed of the new date.
Correct for the May third date. That's correct. We'd have to do all of that.
Okay. Not open it on the fifth as scheduled and just continue it to May third? So we start to get some comments and feedback from the public, because as Chris said, we can meet the the timing for the fifth.
But we already have things on that, and this would take, this could be two hours or longer with public comment on the fifth.
And it would also, it would also give the public a better opportunity to see the plans once they're submitted before the public hearing.
Understood. My concern is that we were initially scheduled for the fifth, and now we're pushing it back a month later. That if we can do the nineteenth or the twentieth, that would be appreciated.
Well. Talking two weeks.
Also, I see. If I understood Bruce's concern, this is going to be an in-public meeting at a Zoom meeting, and we're limited by capacity in the town hall. Is that an accurate statement?
Correct.
Yeah, so I I don't. And you've indicated you have two other items on your agenda for those other meetings, so I I don't think we'd be able to do this in person then. So we probably.
That's why I'm saying that the nineteenth would be difficult to do.
Yeah, so that's why we're looking at May third.
That's why we're looking at the third. Yeah, and it becomes tougher and tougher, too, with, you know, trying to balance this out on a because even as Barbara had mentioned, on a Tuesday alternate of the zoning board meeting, but I believe they I I don't know how that building has been and if the courts are back open, but I know.
I was just getting ready to say court is back open.
Court is open again, yes. That becomes an issue for Tuesdays and Thursday evenings. The building, you know, with the overlapping of the of the court and the that, you know, the us having a meeting could be an issue. That's why it sounds like the May May third may be just our only option at this point.
May, it it, listen, it's May third it is.
Okay.
That's the only acceptable time that we're going to be able to have a meeting.
And also, I see Mr. Chairman has made comments on chat indicate with concerns, we're still going to be governed by whatever the town board adopts as the policy for the use of the building. And Zoom, we don't know if that's going to play a role in that because we don't know whether the governor is going to extend the right to use the Zoom or not. But obviously, I'm sure the board will engage all available means to have as much public access as possible.
Yes, as as we always do, we.
Hey, Bruce?
Yes.
It's Marco, I'm sorry. I just wanted to throw one quick last comment in before we, if we are going with the second one, I'd just like to make sure that screening to these guys to the west, like I said, there's only that one little wall, just make sure that's handled, you know, on the, you know, on the next set of plans that we see.
Okay, yep. All right, so we'll have the the applicant will will address that also.
Yeah, just make sure they address that. That's the only thing I would think on this.
If I understood this correctly, though, the May third meeting is in person driving this right now, am I correct? Because we don't want to have this meeting on Zoom?
Yeah, so it would be easier to do this as an in-person meeting than it would be to do it at Zoom. You know, Zoom is a good menu, an avenue to, you know, to hold a meeting, but when it comes to the public hearing, especially with the large, it becomes cumbersome to manage. You know, as we were seeing tonight with many people coming out for Gasland. You know, we were having, you know, overlapping issues with people for some of the other hearings that were on tonight. So it's much easier when you have an in-person meeting with large, large groups of people looking to talk.
Will will we know for certainty that we could be in person on May third by before we post our notices and put our sign up?
I guess at this point, I mean, we probably have enough time because it sounds like by the next week is the town board meeting, and I believe they're going to make a final decision at that meeting. It's up to the town board to decide whether or not we will be in person back in the town hall. Or if we're going to be stuck with doing the Zoom meetings for you know, longer than what we're anticipating. But that's up to the town board at this point, and I believe that we should have a answer by next Monday.
Is there an outside chance then, if it is Zoom, we could do April nineteenth?
Well, again, it's April nineteenth. We've already got a couple. We have one.
Okay.
We already have two two items that were adjourned to the April nineteenth meeting.
That we're already adjourned to April fifth, it sounds like there's some uncertainty and maybe more discussion, so maybe between now and April fifth, when you announce that adjournment date, there would be more opportunity to have some certainty towards what will happen, either on the nineteenth or at a subsequent date.
I I think just to to, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I think the May third date is the one that we have to focus on. It gives ample time for everything to process through for the lead agency modification, for the plans to be in, for the public access to review the plans. And I think that by pushing it, we're not really doing our best to to keep the process as open and transparent and as it should be.
I think that's the, that's the fair statement. I was just thinking more along, I was focused more on the long lines of being in person, but you're right, Tom. I agree with you. Everybody should have the opportunity to review the plans.
Right.
All right, so so obviously, this, Tom, just let me just go back to procedural matters here. Normally, we have a a public hearing, and then we're just gonna, it's already been scheduled. We're just gonna open the public hearing and then adjourn it to the new date.
I what I I, Mr. Chairman, I was just thinking that perhaps tonight in your motion, you could just postpone it from the fifth to the May third date now and just put that on your next agenda, just listed that it was previously adjourned to May third. I think that way there'd be less confusion with people coming in and attending.
Okay, so if you feel that 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 would meet the you know, the the criteria, then I'm I'm fine with doing that.
Tom, can I? I apologize. Can I ask, will the town also then be taking a vote, will the board, rather, be taking a vote to re-declare its intent to be lead agency on the?
I was, I was just going to, I was just going to propose to the chairman.
Sorry.
That the the motion tonight would be to amend lead agency as another parcel has been included as part of this project. And then to adjourn the April fifth hearing until May third and to schedule the May third public hearing.
Okay, all right, so we do that in two separate, two separate motions. So we need a a motion to amend the lead agency status to recirculate for the additional parcel.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Who made that?
Marco.
Okay, thanks, Marco.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, did we have anybody opposed? Okay, seeing that there's none, all members voted aye, so that's been taken care of. Our next motion we need is to adjourn or adjourn the public hearing, which is currently scheduled for April
Fifth.
April fifth. And and reschedule it for May the third. Get a motion to do so.
I'll make that motion.
I'll send you back.
Okay, motion made by Ralph, seconded by Paul, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, seeing there's no one opposed, all members voted aye. So that's been taken care of.
Thank you very much for your input this evening.
Okay, thank you. All right, and we'll, we will see you on May the third.
Everybody have a happy Easter between now and then.
Okay, you too.
Thank you.
All right, good night, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good night. Okay. All right, so we still have a couple more items to address this evening. Get back, so that we are done with Gasland. Now we have discussion regarding Locust Tree Residential Properties LLC, which is at eighty Airport Drive. Do we have the applicant's engineer on this evening? Troy on here this evening? Thought I just saw him. Yep, okay, there's his hand up. Okay.
All right, I made it to the big stage, finally. Thank you. I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay, easier to run through my project here. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm I'm Troy Wojcikowski, the engineer for the applicant Locust Tree Residential Properties. The property is at eighty Airport Drive. It's in the airport industry zone, and it's currently the site of a landscape business.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, there we go, now I can do it.
Are you trying to share your screen with us?
Yeah, there we go.
All right.
Okay, so I first brought up the so it's a two and a half acre property. Like I said, it has a landscape business currently operating in this location, and this is the existing survey. So the point of the project is really some improvements, really to the to the access and to the front of the property. As you can see on the the current site, you come through the main entrance and most of the the business part of the the business is is in this area here. This is where a lot of the trucks and the loading and material storage and things like that happen. In this area here is where employees park as well as along the sides. And then this is the main office entrance for visitors and and clients. So you can kind of see as you get up into this area, it's a bit of a free-for-all. So there's a lot of intermingling of kind of the the business traffic activities and operations with, you know, potential client, customer and employee parking. So if we go to the site plan, you can see what we're proposing here is basically to try to segregate the employee and visitor parking a little bit better through this kind of streamlined entrance here. You can see the the existing curb here. And what we also want to do is kind of reduce this pavement area and this kind of big open area here by putting landscaped islands that will also help to to shield and screen the operations activities in the back of the of the property here. Another important aspect of improvements is add some some parking area. So what we're doing is basically shoving the sidewalk up against the building to help reduce the amount of lawn area here that we need to put in straight in parking. So right now, there's about thirty parking spaces on the the property. Formally, about seven park parallel along this curb line. And as you can see from the survey, it's pretty tight as it is. So when you have seven or so employees parking along here, just getting in and out of here, I can attest from just visiting my client once in a while, it can be tough. So we're going to re-figure, reconfigure the parking and add some parking spaces in here for a total of, I think it was forty-four. You know, again, just some improvement to island, things like that, but for the most part, it's really just kind of cleaning up the front front part of the property and and trying to separate the operations from from the employee part of it. The last thing I'll note is on utility plan, we started the process of connecting to the new water border main that was all along Airport Drive. I want to say it was maybe four or five years ago now. So we already started that process, and the county is requiring one of these hot boxes, the stainless steel type box that'll house backflow prevention. And and then we'll extend a new line up here that the property is currently served via a well. So that's all I got for you, I think. Just want to open it up for any questions from the board.
I know we had this some discussion earlier regarding the I guess, how this this application came about originally, I guess. I guess there's been some concerns by the zoning administrator and I guess the fire inspector regarding storage at the rear of the property. I'm not sure if everything has been if everything's been addressed for the items that I guess that are currently being stored on site that may need to be addressed within the revised site plan. Hey, Troy, I think you're muted again.
Oh, there we go, now I was loud. Yeah, actually, I'm not aware of any particulars as far as the operations in the back that needed to be reflected on the site plan, so I I would need a list of those or I guess somebody to tell me. At at this point, we haven't shown any improvements or changes to the rear of the property. So I would have to have, you know, some information on that to incorporate that into the site plan.
Okay, but obviously with the change in the driveway with the landscaped islands, I guess that's, you know, part of it is to help screen whatever whatever's going on back there.
Right.
Okay. I don't know if Barbara, are you still on with us? Yep, you're there, okay.
I can't remember the gentleman's name, Troy, but he's, I think, the vice president in charge for them.
Mark, Mark Ciccarelli, maybe.
Yes, Mark. So when we met with Mark out there with the fire inspector, he had another gentleman there keeping a list of everything we discussed. There's a lot of outdoor storage along the wall. There's also three cylinders. I don't remember what's the liquid that's stored in them. But as you can see, they're very close to the property line. There's a home right behind there. And I asked him to take care of cleaning up this rear. Also speaking to the planning board about what's in those cylinders. They're very tall. They're very visible to the neighbor. I don't know if it's hazardous, what's in there either. And to find some other way to store all of the snowplow snowplows when they're not being used and other equipment. So I'm a little surprised to see this plan not address anything in the rear.
Okay. Okay, yeah, and I do not know what's stored in those three cylinders, so I'll have to speak to my client about that as well as this list. So this list was developed recently, like within six months or?
I'd say about five weeks.
Oh, five weeks, okay.
Weeks, and he has a list of everything that was pointed out.
Okay. Yeah, let me, let me get ahold of that and see what needs to be addressed, that we can update the the site plans and show that.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
All right, so Troy, I guess you had received the letters from both the planner and the engineers?
Yes, yep. All pretty straightforward. I don't take issue with with any of the comments.
Okay, so there's no, no real questions for them? To get addressed?
No, no, to both of all. No, no, to both of all.
Okay. All right, um, does any of the uh, any of the board members have any questions for the applicant regarding his current proposal?
Not at this time.
The cylinders are out back, I I actually mentioned that earlier in the day um about the stuff that's stored back there. Would we want to have like the fire department check those cylinders or anything for what they contain?
Well, I guess the the fire inspector will weigh in on it.
They are big, yeah.
Yeah, he would, he would have to, yeah, they they would have to provide him with a um obviously a list of what's being stored in there and then he can um reference it uh whether, you know, and address it as necessary. I'm not sure what's in them, I mean, I know that there would be concerns if it was um if it was a flammable gas or a uh, you know, some other possible, you know, liquids, things like that. You have to be certain distance from the property line.
Yeah, or even waste oils or anything that wouldn't, that'd be uh, should have been placarded properly or?
Yep. So, yeah, so I get.
We'll take care of that.
I guess that would, that would be in a future, um if they can get that submitted to him so that he can review it, that would be appreciated.
Sure thing.
All right. Anybody else um on the board have any concerns uh for the the current proposal?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, um. Yeah, I mean, it, I mean, what you have, I mean, it, from what I'm looking at, it looks um no, it's it's reasonable, I guess it does address some of the uh, I guess the concerns that um you know, that the town staff has regarding the storage in the back, so this would help to um you know, to screen it from the road, which would be good. Do you have your landscape plan, you're gonna, that's gonna be some polar shrubs there, I guess?
Yeah, let's take a look at that. Looks like they have giant arbors, kind of this in there, some urnum, which I think are kind of a tall shrub, I think. But I can actually um provide, you know, some photos of, you know, any of the landscape plantings that are proposed in this. There's four trees, there's four trees out front that uh we're proposing to transplant because I think they're, they're just small enough where they can be uh transplanted successfully. And I did um, I did reach out, there was one comment from, I I think, the town planner regarding whether those trees could be either removed or transplanted after the March thirty-first magic date with the our friends the bats. And I I spoke with my, my wetland biologist, um tree guy, and he said, yeah, these wouldn't be covered under that restriction, so we could do that any time of year.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Chuck could make this more exciting, you're like your last. It is nine thirty though, I guess, that's okay.
The longer we go, the, the others. They're winding down here.
I did have a question regarding parking, the additional seven spaces, that's not associated with any increase in use, that's just symmetry of the parking lot.
Correct, it's just very awkward up front and it's, yeah, it's not, not real workable and um, yeah, it's just a it's not an expansion of the business, I mean, they're kind of limited with building and building more office space or anything like that. They, they have more of a, on uh certain days when like the supervisors, the site superintendents have to come into the office. That's when they they kind of get squished in there, you know, in general, uh just with their normal office staff, I think is somewhere around twenty-five or so, you know, it's okay, you know, with visitors and clients. But there are, you know, certain days where it gets pretty packed and and just the the seven spaces along that um that curb line kind of are terrible, to be honest. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I just saw something popped up uh. Tara got um, got muted again. Let's see.
All right, I think I'm back, am I, I'm back?
There he is.
Been a rough night, I got, I just got, I just got one thing, Troy, I was looking, I was looking at the plan and um along the airport um drive side, you've got uh, you know, curbing the whole way. So how does, so how does uh, you know, your drainage work there, work there now? Cause I was concerned because you're proposing where the new parking spaces are to basically um open that up with wheel stops.
Right, the um, the current drainage is, there's really no closed drainage system up front and there's some catch basins in the back that you can kind of see. Actually, I can show you with my hands, so there's, there's closed drainage in back that picks up, it's discharged into the side swell along drive. And this is a kind of a um, it's like a Belgium block curb that the the water, you can see, everything pitches this way. So I think it gets through the nooks and crannies and just sheet flows through here, so we're really not changing that approach from this chair. But no, we are increasing the impervious just a little bit. I'm I'm proposing to pick up some drainages out here and probably put some infiltrators or something in here as I show on on the plan.
Where do the roof leaders go for the building, are they just discharged at the surface?
Um, I think the front ones are because again, there's no, there's no formal drainage system out, out front here. The only formal closed, you know, catch basin pipe system starts in the back and runs along the side. There's not even anything over here, everything from this side just kind of runs down the the entrance here and everything in the front here, sheet flows into the grass, down into the swell.
Okay, well, I I tell you what, why don't we talk about this uh ourselves and in the interest, uh, you know, of time? But I just was looking at the plan and I happened to see that and I'd like to go over that a little bit further with you, so we can do that, we can do that ourselves.
Yep, I agree, that's fine.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, um. Does anybody else have any, any comments or want to bring to, or any questions that want to ask the applicant?
Nope.
Nope, okay. All right, um.
Ralph is muted.
Who's that, Ralph is muted? Does Ralph have a question? There you go.
Okay. I'm good.
You're good, okay. All right, um.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, cause this is my first time before your board, um this project requires a public hearing, all site plans or?
Well, that.
Is that the board's discretion?
For every, not necessarily for everything. We have a public hearing. Want to refer to uh maybe I mean, Pete did, I'll go with the engineer first, Pete, do you feel um that it's a, is there any substantial changes that may need to get addressed by public comment?
I mean, uh, you know, I don't, I mean, it's basically an existing uh like site, they're improving some of the traffic, you know, patterns. You know, I guess, you know, the question regarding some of the uh stuff that Barbara had brought up behind the site, but I mean, I don't, you know, I, I don't know, personally, I couldn't, I don't see where we're gonna have many, many people come, you know, and comment. It's in, it's in a uh industrial, you know, area, so that's just my opinion.
I just want to make sure, and Malcolm also, there's nothing that that jumps out uh?
Nothing on my end, my only concern would be that uh, given what Barbara told us about the origin of this project, there might be neighbors who would be interested in participating.
Correct, and that's, she's the next one, I was gonna go around the table to uh, to ask her for her opinion uh also. Barbara, are you still with us here? Barbara, are you, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay.
So maybe we should wait to see what he comes up with for the rear and then decide if they need a public hearing. If those cylinders are gonna stay, I would very much recommend that he put some kind of landscaping to buffer them from the property. And that would probably satisfy it, but we should see something in a, in a plan.
Were there, were there any concerns from the neighbors in the back?
I never received any complaints.
Yeah, I think that the nearest house is pretty far, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Yeah, I ju- I just wanted to make sure there wasn't, you know, um, there was a lot of complaints regarding this, so. Okay. So um, at this time, I think maybe, you know, we, we can clean up the um all the items that need to be addressed, uh then we can go ahead and uh once the information's provided, all the parties need to review it, then we can make a better decision if we need to have a public hearing or not.
Okay.
So it, again, the um, the answer is not all the time that we have to have public hearings on, on amended plans. If it's considered uh, you know, minor in nature, the board does have some discretion. Many items that can get addressed, that would be helpful.
Okay, yeah, we'll take care of that.
All right. So I guess at this point, we're just, we'll just await a uh, a resubmission.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good, thanks all, have a good night.
Okay, thank you, have a good evening.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um. Our next item this evening, we have uh MWF LLC Subaru dealership facade, uh metal panels and stone upgrade. We have here this evening for for the applicant. Is there?
Just have him raise his hand so we can unmute him.
Yeah, yeah, whoever is um here for the representing the Subaru dealership, if you could raise your hand, identify yourself. You may need help getting unmuted by uh our administrator.
Okay. Okay, I'm here, Mark Infanti?
Okay, um, okay, is it Mark?
Mark, M A R K, yes.
Okay, Mark, how you doing this evening?
Very good.
Okay, um, so I guess you um, had made the submission for the um uh for the dealership for the facade renovations?
Right.
Now, you, you're the engineer for the project or?
I'm the construction manager.
Okay, all right.
Originally, we, we appeared before you for an architectural review only. And then you, then we were, I don't know if you remember that, and then we were asked to remove the berm in the front. And uh, we did that, and then um, I think Barbara and they thought we had to come in front of the uh, in front of your board. So it was really just a simple side renovation and that's it.
Okay, um, so obviously then, did you receive the copies of the memos from the planner and the engineer?
Yes, we did, we have no problem with either one of those.
Okay, so you've um, so you're gonna go ahead and take care of all the items that the that the planner had on here, I guess, to look for some revisions to what the plan that was submitted?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and I know that the engineer had a question regarding um the berm itself and the fill that's gonna be removed from that spot, and there was a question regarding where that was gonna be going to.
We don't know at this time, um, when we contract out to find somebody. It's the, the old adage, when you have some fill to get rid of, you don't know where it's gonna go until you're ready to remove it because if you picked the site ahead of time, it could be satisfied by the time we get there, so. But we would let the uh building department know where we're going with it.
Well, in that case, um, in that case, why don't we put a a note on the map that says prior to a a building permit being uh like issued, uh the disposal site shall be, you know, identified if, if it's in, if it's in the town of Lappinures and then um, you know, if it is, uh, there may need to be a a grading um permit taken out for that disposal site.
That'd be fine. That'd be fine. Okay.
Is that okay with Barbara?
Yes, that would be good, if it's in the town, we need a grading permit, if it's being taken, taken out of the town, just some sort of certification or receipt that it left the town.
All right, so if we could just go add that, add that note to the uh, you know, the plan that prior to the building permit and provide that information.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Okay, um, so at this point, I guess procedurally um there's no need for a public hearing um for this, for this item. Do we need to waive it?
Yes.
Okay. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to waive the public hearing for um the amended site plan as proposed.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so we have motion and second, all in favor? Hey, any members that are opposed? Okay, seeing that there's none, then all members voted aye in favor waiving the public hearing. I guess we, based upon what's been discussed this evening, I mean, we can make an approval for this or authorize the planner to approve it based upon the items that were discussed this evening? Or should we put this off to another meeting and have them resubmit prior to to review?
What will we, we, what will we resubmit?
Well, that's my question to um, to staff. Let me, we, we received the facade, um you know, the renovations to the facade, uh we kind of looked at them at the previous meeting. Uh, I believe that you had brought them to us
Yes, sir.
that evening. I don't think there was any, any issues with what was being proposed, uh the bigger question was addressing the berm. Malcolm, uh, do you see any need to um to re-review this?
I don't, um, I don't, but also Pete's, Pete's comments were more substantial than mine, so i- if Pete is okay with us moving forward, there's no reason not to on my end.
Okay.
Did we um, ask anything about the lighting schedule or what they, what they're proposing on the building itself? And how's that aiming into the parking lot?
I, I believe the um, there was no lighting changes.
No lighting changes.
No lighting changes, so their signs that are going on the building will not be lit?
No, they will be lit, it, we, we put the lumens on, there's a, there's a uh, you requested uh lumens and we, we put them on the plan.
Okay. And then, and Malcolm, they're okay with you?
The um, the signage was not submitted in the the packet that I reviewed, the signage, I believe, came in. initially beforehand uh and was being handled with the signing permit uh with Barbara. It's my understanding that it is uh more modest, that that it is an improvement on what is currently there.
Okay, that's true.
I believe that the 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 most objectional element is the is the large indoor sign that says Mini Cooper and that that is coming down.
That's removed already, by the way.
Yep. But yeah, Pete, as long as your questions are answered as far as drainage goes.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't have any questions on uh, you know, drainage. My only my only thing was that we just need to add a a note to uh, you know, the site plan about identifying where other fill materials is going to be deposited prior to a a building permit. So that can certainly be a a condition of approval. The other thing is um, was there, and again, this is more like in your court, was there a a signature signature block on the site plan?
The site plan was missing a lot of those elements, um, but this one will be attached to the previous site plan. It should need that.
Okay, so Bruce doesn't have to sign this new uh, sign this.
Would be a better question for Barbara.
I mean, it's an amended site plan technically, right?
It's an amended site plan. Um, what we discussed, what I discussed with her was that this would be that the resolution would make reference to the previous approved approved amended uh previously approved site plan. And that that is my only substantive comment, that that note needs to be added to the plan.
All right.
When it's filed.
Okay.
So so Pete, um, the only thing they're doing is removing the berm berm, which is besides the signage, which was really at the board's request. And whatever they do here, we will attach this to the approved plan because they can't use Larry Pagie's plan.
Right, right.
So to make them do an entirely new site plan for this just seemed overkill. So we'll make sure that this resolution and this map gets uh not only in the building files, but in the planning files. So if anyone goes to look at this down the road, it will all be attached.
Okay, that's fine. Sure.
Malcolm, can you just remind me, what did we do with secret here?
Uh, we received an EAF.
Did we type it?
Probably be a.
Oh, it's a type two.
And is it type two? The removal of the berm is also with the removal of the berm?
Yes. Yeah, and you would and you would have that in uh your resolution, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to make sure that.
All right, so basically, we need a resolution to tie this all together. So is it prudent at this time to go ahead and authorize the planner to prepare the resolution?
I think so.
Okay, so can we get a motion to authorize the planner to prepare resolution for approval of the amended site plan?
I'll make that resolution.
Make the motion?
Motion. Not the resolution, just the motion.
I'll second that.
All right, um, motions made and second all in favor. Okay, any members that are opposed? Okay, seeing none, then all members voted aye for the approval. So I guess at this point, I guess it's a matter of getting, you know, all the updated information uh out to everybody and we can get uh, then the planner can turn around and draft the resolution and we can put this on a future meeting.
It's just just to reiterate, we just got to put a note on the plan that before any soil is removed, we have to let know where it's going, basically.
Yes.
And if it's in town, we'll need a grading plan, of course. If it's out of town, we still will let it let you know either way.
Right, just that, yeah, they if it's taken out of town and there's be some type of documentation, you know, from the people who are going to remove it.
Okay, great. So we'll add that note and I'll get the joins up to Barbara.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Have a great night, all.
You too.
Okay, um. Our last item on the agenda for this evening is the conceptual review of Lawrence Farms conversion of office building into apartments. Let's see, we have uh the applicant's uh architect is here, Paul Pilon. Uh, Paul, you should be able to unmute yourself at this point. I believe there's no restriction.
Very good. Thank you.
All right.
Um, would it be best to share my screen?
Um, yes, probably if you can uh show us what um.
Sure.
The proposal consists of?
As I'm doing that, I uh would like to point out that members of the Lawrence family are with us this evening, so they'll be able to help us out.
Okay, which will be good.
So I assume that everyone can see that fine?
Yes.
Great. So um, I'm I'm pretty sure that everyone is fairly familiar with the Lawrence Farm site. The project that we're proposing is to change the use of the building that's on the westerly side of the site behind the main retail buildings. That building is uh approximately twenty-three hundred square feet. It is currently being used as an office and storage. And our proposal is to change the use of that building from that office and storage and make four one-bedroom apartments out of it. We don't intend on making any alterations or changes to the footprint of the building. All of our revisions are going to be within the footprint and of course, windows and doors on the exterior to accommodate the apartments. The uh proposed use is permitted by the zoning. It is it is in a highway business district. And so if I can just change my screen, I believe you can still see that.
Yeah, yes, we can.
Okay, so basically, the footprint remains the same. They're proposing to have uh these these four one-bedroom apartments. There is in the rear a a common laundry facility for them. It is not intended to be used by the public. It is strictly for the residents of the apartment building. And we basically are just going to be making some exterior modifications, changing the windows, changing the siding. But again, the footprint is going to remain the same. We and we'll be using the um existing site water and sewer uh systems. We are going to get some documentation from the engineer uh that indicates that our proposed use won't have any uh adverse effect on those systems. They're still within the capacity. And um as far as parking goes, on the site plan, there were ten parking spaces in front of the building based on the change of use. And I believe based on your most current updated parking requirements, we need a total of eight spaces for this formally being used as an office and storage. It was dedicated six spaces. So we're talking about maybe two spaces that that would be an increase, but given the existing parking of approximately two hundred and fifty parking spaces, doesn't seem like that the parking is going to be a a terrible um issue to deal with. So that's kind of a brief overview of where we're at, uh, given the low visibility from Route nine. We're hoping that maybe we can work with the the staff to try and do this. Um, and and we're not altering the site in any way.
Okay, um, all right, is anybody, any of the any of the board members have any questions uh regarding the proposal?
No.
No, it looks good. It's a good idea.
Okay.
Bruce, I have something. Paul, um, uh, your engineer will have to get a a sign off from, you know, the county county health department, just you know, to confirm that, you know, the capacity is, you know, acceptable. So we'll need some some kind of documentation from from the county health department on the chain change of use.
Okay.
All right.
So 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 what is our, what's um, I didn't mean to interrupt if anybody else had any comments, but what what what's our next step? Is this is this possible that, given that it's fairly low impact, we're not really changing the site? Is there any way that maybe we can work with the staff in the building department? Because it really does seem more of a building issue um in terms of getting a building permit? Given the, you know, approval from the health department?
We still need a resol- you need a you need approval from the planning board to amend the site plan. I mean, I don't think that it should be a tremendous long review, but it still needs to be approved by the planning board.
Is this uh, is this is this a potential to to be treated similar to the last application? Does it fall under that or we need to go into more detail?
Well, I I don't think there would be a need for a public hearing. And I think it, you know, could be streamlined, but there would have to be an approval of the plan.
Oh, yeah, of course. Yeah, yeah. Like what we did on the last one, a resolution and
Yep.
waive the hearing and I mean, that's that's.
As far as, yeah, as far as localizing the work that they'll have to do in terms of the plans, I think that makes sense. You can base it off of the amended site plan. I would be curious to see a little bit more information of the immediate area. Does that make sense? I'm curious. I'm curious how far this building is from the lot lines. I'm curious how the areas immediately surrounding this building are being used. And I'm curious how those neighboring lots are being used.
It's a wetland, isn't it, Paul, all behind us?
If you if you I did change my screen, I'm assuming you can see it that but the 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 wetlands buffer, I believe this is the wetlands line right here. So this is where our existing building is. Um, this is the main retail buildings along, you know, the frontage on Route nine that you can see from the street. So as far as the adjacent properties, I don't know if this change of use is going to have a whole lot of impact of it, you know, we're not changing the building. And in fact, I would suggest that maybe that as a residential use, the impact's even less.
I would think so, too. I was more worried about I guess uses on the neighboring property impacting residents where there weren't residents before. But if that's all wetland area, that that I'm satisfied there.
Okay.
Okay, so I I mean, at this point, it sounds like it just needs to get a uh, you know, a formal submission for an amended site plan. Um, I guess whatever gets submitted, as long as it addresses the comments that were brought up tonight. We could go for, you know, just review it and assuming everything's in place, we can you know, move forward towards an approval.
Great.
I don't I don't see, um. It shouldn't, there's really nothing that's jumping out at anybody right now, so. Seems pretty straightforward.
We thought so.
Yeah. All right, so if nobody else has any questions um regarding this one, I guess we'll just await for um, wait for the submittal.
So we'll make application? And then, okay, great.
Yep, just make application. We'll get you on to the the next uh available meeting. Um, we'll go through it, hopefully move it towards a you know, an approval.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Take care. Thank you.
Okay, so now that we're to the end of the agenda this evening, I guess if nobody has any other business they'd like to bring up, I guess we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made second all in favor. All right, okay, probably none opposed, so I guess we're adjourned. All right, thank you.